All right, so while Erin, before Erin gets back, I will call the school committee meeting to order. The chair is stuck in traffic on Route 30 and should be here soon. But wanted us to get going for our little pre-meet conversation about logistics before the first meeting begins at six fifteen. So I'm calling the Wayland School Committee meeting to order. We're being recorded by Weyland. We're not having a comment tonight. We have tonight a meeting. And I think that's all I have to say.
Yeah, Diane couldn't be here tonight, so I'm gonna take some minutes.
Okay. So Jeanie kindly put together a list of questions as we asked her to last night. And we're going to kind of decide a process for posing the questions to the candidates.
Yes.
Erin's on camera and the meeting is gone.
And the questions are, just so everyone who's watching knows, are questions that everyone sent in. I didn't make the questions. I just compiled them. I mean, I had a couple of my own.
Thanks for doing that, Jeanie.
So typically what we do, we've done is just we go in a circle and read the questions. So I guess we just have to decide which way, where we start and which circles, which way we go.
And feel free to change the order. I put them in an order that kind of seemed okay to me, but I'm like totally open because they didn't really all flow in an order, so.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I think we should have the same person read this or ask the same questions for each candidate. So if we take them out of order, that will throw us off, right?
Well, yeah, unless we renumber them right here.
Oh, if we want to do that right now, yeah.
We're just gonna go right next to them, who's asking the question.
Yeah.
Right, okay, so should we have Chris start?
Chris, yeah.
He's the chair.
Yes.
So I'm gonna give him one and two. Okay? So who wants to go after Chris?
Where is he sitting?
Yeah, I'd just go.
Yeah, just go around. Okay. E, oh my God, we're both EG.
I know. I realized that today.
Jeanie is four. You're both J's. Jess is five. Erin is six. Chris is seven. Ellen is eight. Jeanie is nine. Jess is ten. Erin, I took one for her.
Perfect. So we each get two questions. Okay.
So the only thing I was gonna say to you
I just went over the line.
Is maybe when he introduces the process, there are people or someone should say this, that we have ten very full, multi-leveled questions, you know, that we're gonna be trying to get through in forty, just to give them a sense of how many questions we have.
So ten questions in forty minutes? That's four minutes, question.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. And that leaves a little time for them to.
Six and eleven, right? Just wanted to confirm.
I don't think I should do the little bell.
No, no, we don't, no, we don't have to do the bell, but I'm just, just so they have a sense of.
What kind of sound?
Because some people will be more verbose and some less, you know.
But that's always very tough. Okay. Anything else that anyone wants to say? Like while we're being here?
Follow-up, I just guess, do we, like if they say something that drops a follow-up in our mind, are we okay to bring that if it's related to what the question was? Or is that not something we would do?
So I think the only question I would have about that is not going down the rabbit hole.
Yeah.
If you follow up, like I guess that would depend on where you are in the format.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just thinking, like, I don't know, I can't think of a specific example at the moment, but maybe if, like, oh, you mentioned this and that sounded really cool. Can you just tell me, like, this about it or something?
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't shut that down, but I would try to stay in.
The other thing, we're interviewing the second person is.
Tim Love?
Yeah. So just in your questions, this says, you know, experience as a superintendent. He's, he's a deputy superintendent, so I don't know if people.
He did act as a superintendent in Medick for a couple of months.
Yeah.
I think they all did at some point.
Yes, but I'm just saying, just to be cognizant of that when you're asking your question, if it makes a difference. So Ellen, I see yours from one. It's not at mine.
Okay, I'll try to adjust. One is Zoom, or was starting on Zoom, ending on Zoom, so we're all.
No, Zoom's the first one.
Zoom's just the first one, yeah.
And then the other two were in person.
Yeah. And Leisha's nicely here for Zoom.
Thank goodness.
I know, I was a little nervous about that, frankly.
And he didn't need, like, a password or anything. He just needed the link, right, Leisha?
He, the password was embedded in the link. Jeanie and I tested it today and you sent it on to him.
I did. Well, I sent it to Erin, who sent it to him.
I just forwarded it.
Yeah.
The password should have been embedded.
Yeah, because I signed on.
I didn't click it, I just.
No, but I did. Leisha and I tested it today and I signed on and she was there, so, yeah.
Okay.
I actually tested it in the room today with Weyland, too.
Yeah, that's very, see, this is why we're so glad you're here. And have that fancy camera thing. I thought, by the way, the traffic from the center, just coming through the center of town was really bad, too.
Center that way.
Yeah, near the library.
On the other one.
Like on the other radio.
Yeah. You didn't?
I didn't have surprise.
I was kind of surprised that it hit it. I was like, ugh.
And sports are starting to, like, that time.
And it's kind of, yeah, it's light, it's, yeah, it's all the end of the day.
I know the seltzer, but it's.
Oh.
Do you want it?
I'll go look in the fridge, because I love very, it's a million of those little waters that they bring to.
Yeah, let me know, because I have some in my office. Does anyone else leave one?
Have our own.
No, thank you, Leisha.
Thank you.
Do we think Chris is gonna be here by six fifteen?
Yeah.
Leisha coming up on one from here.
No worries.
He seems to have locked the way into secret coverage. Thank you.
Hey, girl, we have something in the meeting on Friday. I'm also doubling it, but I want to know if you want to be part of this or not, because we can make this part of the meeting. The, Tom had expressed a big interest in sitting down with the finance committee chairs and Kelly to get stuff set up so Susan makes sure.
The link says, sorry.
The link says it's not working. Is it because we're not, I'm just getting a text from him. Because I told him, text me if you ever.
Or maybe because it's too early? Was it set at six fifteen start?
I don't know if Leisha's, like, turned it on yet.
It's open today.
So to sit down with them so Susan's prepared to, like, knows exactly what they want next year, like, he really wants to get that in order, because, you know, every year we have this. And I thought that was great. So they're also.
I can do that now, just to give you a note.
They're also Friday.
Why don't we go ahead and do that?
Thank you so much.
I brought some for the candidates, too.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Well, not this one, bud.
You can do the magic of technology.
But do you want to?
Thank you.
I know, that's what I thought. So I'll see if they can come as part of our meeting, basically. Make this part of our, the end of our meeting. I don't think it's a long thing, but, okay. Do you have a hard stop? Eight thirty we were doing.
Friday, March first.
Like, if we went to nine, would that be okay? I mean, sorry, if we went to eight thirty, nine thirty, if we went to ten, would be that?
Okay, once we try it.
Okay, all right.
We're gonna cut one piece, start, we're gonna cut to the panel. Then you wanna cut that to.
Yes, you want me to do that over on the screen?
Yeah, yeah.
I know how to do that.
Actually, he never said his name to me. And Chris was the only one who said the name to me, so.
Well, maybe when he introduces himself.
Yeah, maybe he'll introduce himself or something. I don't know.
I was thinking Sarah on the.
Oh, that's true.
No, I'm guessing Sarah.
You never know. I was coupling one of them.
I think.
That's great. Anyway. Anyway. There was one wrong letter at the end of his name.
That's not terrible.
No.
I love it.
He seemed like good juju bee.
They're actually, there's a whole story behind it, but.
I think you told me once when I, yeah.
Did you find a triangle?
I did. Is it not, oh, hold on. Yeah.
Well, that's okay, Chris, I'm in.
That's good. Does he have Zoom installed? Wait, can I call him?
Go ahead.
Do you ever?
Wait, where was it?
Go to sign on to a Zoom meeting and it says installing updates, like, right when you start the meeting, and it always panics me. It usually only takes sixty seconds, but it's like, ugh.
I don't, a lot of the time, I feel like every time.
Yeah, yeah, when I did it with Lisa today, it said install.
She's not saying where she is. She just said it's coming from my home. Okay.
See, this is why it's good to have Leisha.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know what to do.
I wouldn't either. I was like, oh, the first one's Zoom and she said, oh, I'll be there. I said, oh, that would be really good.
Yeah. That's what I'm gonna do. Yeah.
Diane updated that. Class has passed.
Which is.
It was when I, like, opened it up. I just had.
Oh, A C T R.
All those rules, I got to pass that each one.
I called, like you said, and then I texted. I know, I totally agree, because I have the same thing. And I, but I was very, like, we talked last night, we need to, this one, I get it out by nine or nine thirty. By nine o'clock, you're in the room.
What we needed to, this is all funky, and then I fixed it and it looked perfect.
Yeah. Yeah. It was fine.
It's up there. You guys didn't have a very rooting in.
Oh, right. We talked about it, we said, what to do.
Okay, I just sent you an updated link, fresh copy of the.
Sorry, I just copied.
Oh, you're calling?
Yeah. Well, the link I used.
She says what it is.
You retired on my birthday last year.
I wonder if anything you did.
Not that I have seen.
It's a big green tree.
It's usually better if I can take it in the other kind of. I need chicken fingers. Maybe I thought I'd get one as a gift. It was so special. It's delicious.
Did you make it?
Yeah, just.
And that's.
Like, nothing.
I'm not sure, have a minute.
My mom makes them, and we call them Mama Janet's homemade chicken fingers.
They're probably really good.
They're really good.
Because it's like fried, fried, homemade fried chicken, yeah.
It sounds good. And wait, give me, one of them will give you away when we're ready. We just have to cut over.
Thank you, Leisha.
You're welcome. She was very lovely, I thought. She had the nice smile on her.
I'll be Chris's fourth.
What's that?
I'll be Chris's first one.
I think we should start.
Yes, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, let me cut over.
All right.
I do, I do.
Oh, you did, okay. Great.
Hello, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
First, we should just introduce ourselves. I'm gonna start by saying I'm Ellen Greco and I'm the vice chair of the school committee. The chair is stuck in traffic a few miles away and should be here soon. So, okay? Uh, go ahead, Jeanie.
Hi, I'm Jeanie Downs.
Hi, Jeanie.
Hi, Jessica Polzotti.
Hi, Jessica.
Hi, I'm Erin Gibbons.
Hi, Erin. And I'm John Lucero.
All right, nice to meet you.
Great to meet you, Erin.
So I'm gonna start and I'm gonna, we have here a list of questions, which we're gonna just ask you going around in a circle.
Great.
And then at the end, we'll have time, hopefully, for you to ask us whatever you'd like to ask us. We have about forty minutes and we have ten questions, so that's a fair amount, that's a, not that much time per question, so just kind of setting your expectations there.
No problem. It's been a while, too, so I'm trying to get myself back acclimated into it.
Right. So you, you just introduced yourself, but is there anything you'd just like to add briefly so that the public and the committee knows a little bit about you before we start?
Sure. So my name's John Lucero. I'm currently retired. I retired from Stonem Public Schools last August. I was the superintendent there for the past five-plus years. Before Stonem, I was the superintendent for six years at the Winthrop Public Schools, where I currently reside in Winthrop. And, but leading up to superintendent, I was a pre-K through six elementary principal, both in Saugus and in Revere for seven years. And I was a music drama teacher for twelve years, as well as a fine arts director. And at one time, back in the late nineties, I was the president of the teachers' union. So I've had quite a bit of things and I've also served in your roles back when I was twenty-three years old. I served as a school committee member for the Saugus Public Schools. So I've kind of seen it from a lot of various, areas.
Yeah, so this is Chris Ryan, he's the chair.
Hi, sorry, apologize for being late, traffic was bad.
No, no problem, no problems.
We've done number one.
And currently, um, so the reason I'm on video right now is currently I'm down, as I said, I'm retired and currently down in Hilton Head. Been here for the winter and getting ready this week to work the big heritage golf tournament for the PGA, so very excited.
Wonderful, wonderful. Great, so I have, okay. Could you please explain to us, sort of in your own words, the role of the superintendent? What do you see as the most important priorities? Do you see Wayland as having different priorities than other, than other districts? And could you please explain that?
Sure, well, I mean, the, the role of the superintendent, of course, is the, is your CEO of your organization. So that's the person who is in charge, who makes sure that everything comes together and is done efficiently. But by doing that, you have to work with all parties. And that's the most important part of this job. One is that you have to listen, you have to be a great communicator, and you also need to be able to resolve issues and collaborate. And that's what I feel is the most important part of being the superintendent, is collaborating. Yes, we're the educational leader, yes, we're the person who, we're the rock stops, yes, we're the, we're the individual where, you know, everybody's gonna come to when there is a crisis or an issue. However, you have to build a strong team. And I think that that's part of, great, you know, when a system works well, it's because the superintendent is able to delegate well, has people that know their jobs, works well with those people, and gets their best so that our kids get the best of everyone.
Great.
Hi.
Thank you.
Our staff and families have been through a lot in the past few years. How do you envision working with the administrators, staff, and families to improve morale and trust? Please give specific examples, including effective communication with stakeholders. And how would you work and communicate with the school committee?
So you're absolutely correct, the last few years have been very, very difficult. As I always say to people, COVID years are like, you know, seven years and dog years. I mean, it's just, it was very difficult, not only for educators, but also mostly for our students and families. I think that there comes a point when you need to work together and you have to heal and bring people together. One of the things that I did a lot in Stonem was we would have constant meetings. I constantly was communicating by whether it was telephone. During the COVID crisis, I was out there every day making sure that they knew what was happening. I would send out a phone message telling them what needs to be done, where we need to go, specifically working with, with individuals. School committee, we had, when we met with the school committee and we had school committee meetings, we always allowed people to be able to be on Zoom. And our school committee was very good about having those folks come in and communicate with us what those needs were. Working with the principals, the staff, morale was hard. It was hard during those times because people were going through a lot. They were going through real difficult transitions. And so I think what was, what you had to do is, is really sit back and help and get involved. I will tell you that one of the things that I did as superintendent, I was teaching fourth grade on occasion. I'd go in and help substitute, because you know, and I'm sure you're still experiencing this, with various roles, it's hard to fill some of these roles. So you have to take the gloves off, get in, work with your people, work together. And, and people really appreciated that. We would send out newsletters, we would send, I do a Good News Friday. That's always been one of the things I did. I did that in Winthrop and I did it in Stonem. And what I would tell my principals and, oh, each building, please submit to us every week something that happened. It wasn't something, you know, like, oh, such and such did this. It was about what, what were some of the great things that happened in your school? And we would send that not just to our parents, but I would send that out to the community as well. We would get, you know, a mailing list and we would communicate with those, because I think it was very important for our community to understand, hey, these are the great things that are happening in the school district. So that was, those were something that we did before COVID, but I felt that during COVID, they were real strong. And then finally, I would say that, you know, what's really important is being approachable. I think that's the most important part of, of the superintendent. My door was always open, you could ask anyone, no matter how crazy it was, no matter how difficult the time was. Not only was my door open, but my phone was always on. I've had many, I've had multiple phone calls with members of school committee, teachers, staff, you know, two in the morning, three in the morning, texts coming in, but you have to be willing to do those things. And I think that when people see that you're committed and you're really focused and you're, you're, you're listening to their issue, even though their issue, that other people might not seem like it's a big issue, it's a big issue to them, and you have to give them the respect that they deserve. And I think in return, you would get the respect back, so.
Thank you.
Great. John, can you please describe in detail your experience with special education services and the balance between providing what the students need and managing the cost of those services to the town?
Yes. So over the past twelve years, I went from, worked with our special education director in Winthrop. My special education director became my assistant superintendent. I felt that that was important because I wanted the, I wanted our teachers and our staff to understand the protocols and to make sure that when the special education director needed something because of timelines, those responsibilities were being completed on time and done. As we moved into Stonem, we did primarily the same thing with our special education director. She was the assistant superintendent, too, there. However, one of the things that I found that we were, we, we had some issues that we were dealing with, what, what that was, was that we had too many of our teachers were controlling the meetings. You know, our special education teachers were controlling those, some of the angles. And things were, we, it was like, what I would say is when people were getting into special education, it seemed like they were never coming out of special education. For, and, and, and it's not that they should come out, but maybe they've achieved or they, they don't need to remain in there. So one of the things that we did in Stonem last year is we realized that our educational team leaders were overburdened. We had one for elementary, we had one for middle school, and one for high school. And yes, the high school and middle school could handle it to the most part, because some of those students had come, you know, the, the students had gotten less as they go higher. But at the elementary level, we were influx with so many requests that we realized that that was costing us a lot of money. And we needed to real, find what was the root cause here. And the root cause, quite frankly, was people felt that it was, well, I'm, I'm gonna refer this person because I can't get what I need from that particular child, even though that child didn't have a special education issue, but it was the teacher or somebody referred it and then a parent referred. So what we did is we hired educational team leaders for each building. And that was one of the things that we felt that would be helpful, because now that person was gonna be associated within the building. That was gonna help our teachers. Because right now, before it was more of a district level, and I think when you personalize it and you bring it more to within the school level, that starts to make teachers understand and, and families understand. And it allowed us to kind of focus in on what those major issues were. And we, I, I believe now this year, I, I'm not there, but this was something that I wanted to have happen before we left, but I do hear that those things are moving in the right direction. Our numbers at, in Stonem, our special education numbers were higher than the state. And so we needed to take a real good, hard look at what we were doing. And I think the plans that we created are plans that eventually are going to move us more in larger. We also created programs within our districts that were important so that we could have savings, cost savings, and not allow, not have to send kids out. We felt that, I, as I always said to people, it's more important for us to be able to have your child with us as opposed to sending them out, unless it is in the best interest of that child, because we cannot provide that service within our needs. But if we can, then let's do it and let's make it the best that we can so that your child is benefiting, but also that the district is, too, because those costs are, are very expensive.
Great, thank you.
All right, so my question is, why are you interested in pursuing the acting superintendent position in Wayland in July twenty twenty-three specifically? And what do you believe you can contribute to the Wayland Public Schools, our students, staff, and families, and the Wayland community in that position if you are hired? How would you prepare for starting in Wayland?
It's a great question. I've been asking this. I've been asking myself that all day. And all of a sudden, I'm now, you know, I, I, on a personal note, last year I was ready to retire. And I think part of it is, is that, you know, I felt it was the right time. And I felt also that those last couple of years had really taken a real toll on me, I mean, personally. And it 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 was, for me, I needed to separate and take a break. I planned on that I was going to retire in twenty-four, but things changed. And in twenty-two, I felt like, you know what, this was a good opportunity for me to leave and kind of get back on who I was as a person. And in this past year, I have done that. I have, you can't see it here and you wouldn't know it. I've I've worked hard to lose weight, to get myself back into shape, to get not only physically but mentally. And I feel that I'm very prepared on that now. I'm doing well in those particular areas. And I just wanted to find out who I was again. And I had that, I had that opportunity where, you know, I I I feel our staff need that opportunity at times as well. But I had the opportunity to do that. And now I feel rejuvenated. And I feel like, you know, this there's, this might be a great opportunity for me to go back because I do believe that I have a lot to contribute. And those things that I have that I can contribute to Wayland is pretty much a lot of things that I contributed to the other districts. I listen and I try to resolve issues. I I want to collaborate with people. I know that you've all gone through some very difficult times. I don't mind, you know, I've looked, I I I did some researching online of Wayland Public Schools because I didn't know, you know, I don't know Wayland Public Schools. And I wanted to say, what could I contribute to them? What I can contribute is someone who will come to the table, who will listen to all sides of the parties, and and really take initiative to move Wayland forward in a direction that will help the new superintendent that will come on in a year and be that transitional leader that I think that you, at this point, need. And by doing that, I also feel that having had the opportunity to step away from it for a while makes you come back and understand how to appreciate it and listen to it and have some more understanding of what people are going through. I think you have to really humble yourself in this role. And I think you also have to really listen and make teach, you know, and allow teachers and allow new employees and new kids, you know, have an opportunity to express what they need. And by hearing that, then figure out ways to be able to provide that.
Thank you. Okay. Wayland families are looking for a superintendent who will listen and put student needs first. Wayland teachers are accustomed to autonomy. How can you balance relationships with both families and our educators so that our students get what they need for success? Could you please provide examples from your experience?
Well, one of my experiences was actually when I, before I became superintendent, I was the elementary principal of the A.C. Wayland School in Revere. And we had an opportunity to do an expanded day school. So, you know, and that was back in two thousand and six. And right off the bat, when I thought, I I was one of those principals who said, oh, this would be great. You know, I I I can bring these kids in and we can give them an eight-hour day. But part of that eight-hour day, they're going to get arts every day, and they're going to get physical education every day. And our teachers are going to get prepped every day, and our teachers are going to be able to, you know, come and plan every day. Well, of course, that's my mind thinking, this is, this is great. But what I did is I formed a committee with teachers, parents. And we worked two years on that, to be honest, we worked two years. But I had to allow them to come together and understand how this will benefit kids. And I'm proud to tell you that within that two years, the Wayland School, we did become an expanded day learning school. And it wasn't until this past year that they stopped. And the reason they stopped was because the Massachusetts cut the funding for that particular program. But our kids and our teachers were getting what they needed to get on there. So that was one way of of, you know, listening and and communicating one of those types of things. So what I would say is, what what are the issues? You know, I I would need to know what the issues are. I don't work autonomically. I'm not a person who turns around and says, this is the way it's going to be and that's that. That's not who I am. And if you talk to anybody in my districts, they'll tell you that's not who I am. I'm a person who's six and I I I work by committee, I work with teams. I try to get everybody on the same page, but I let us find out why we can't get on the same page. And then how do we resolve that so that we can see if this will work? That's, that to me is the only way it's going to work. Because if you don't buy into it, you're not going to want to, you're not going to want to do it. And so I may buy into it, but if you're not going to buy into it, any other ones who are going to run the programs or run what we're, what our mission is, then I have to have you involved in that decision.
Thank you.
Okay. The committee takes its anti-racist racism resolution seriously. We have families of color who live in our town and who live in Boston. Please describe specific ways in which you've provided advancement for students of color and other marginalized student populations in your previous districts and share what actionable steps you have taken to improve communication, acceptance, and ensure all families, and more specifically, families of color and other marginalized groups feel welcome in our schools.
So in Stonem, the school committee, myself, when we we created proclamations that support all students, students of color, of all races, we've worked very, I worked very closely. We created a committee that worked very closely. We had a community group called Stonem Reads. In the Stonem Reads group, we, there were, there were collaboration of books. It 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 wasn't something that I would turn around and say, I can specifically say that we did this or that. We we worked together as a community to allow all of our students a full inclusiveness. And I think that that was really important in Stonem because we saw how certain events that we would do and in working with my high school principal and and other principals as we would go through different types of events, we would realize that those events need to change because they're not in good representation of all students. It may be a culture that we've done or a tradition that we, that the school community has done. But you know what? That's not correct. It's not politically correct. And it's, and those were the types of things that we felt needed to change for our students and to make our, and to, and help our students understand what it is. We changed dress codes within, at the high school. We changed, you know, we 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 changed hair and 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 coat, the coats, those different types of coats that, you know, kind of restricted because that's what we, at at one point, the district felt was was the proper way. But in realizing, we had to grow as well. So I would say if we look back at our student handbooks, you would see the changes that we we did. But more importantly, meeting with families and talking to families and understanding their needs and looking at it through a different lens. I think, you know, I think it was very important for me to be able to do that. And we also, as part of a scene collaborative, when Stonem is a, one of ten schools that's in the scene collaborative, we hired, there was five or six districts that came together and we hired an individual who would also come in and help us make sure that we were on the correct path of doing what we needed to do for all students.
Thank you.
To provide a concrete example from your past experience as superintendent where you were faced with a difficult conflict involving at least two or more parties or a challenging time for the district, describe the nature of the conflict or challenge, how you approached it, and what the result, what was the result of your intervention? And if you had to do it all over again, what would you have done differently?
I'm sure there's plenty of them as I go back into my memory on it. You know, COVID, we had quite a bit of challenges. And in COVID, one of the things that we really dealt with right off the bat, of course, was when, how do we get kids back into the building and how do we start and how do we do all of that? And I'm, I I'm very pleased to tell you that in September of twenty, September of twenty, you know, we were able to start and we went into a hybrid mode. And yet, it still, it was, it was difficult for, because some people wanted us there all the time. We just, you know, we we followed those guidelines. But what I will tell you this, and then I want to go to another area. Last year of of was a very difficult time because of the whole mask issues. You know, that that really drew a fine line between neighbors. And it really caused a lot of issues. And and as a school committee and as superintendent, we really didn't have control of that. But yet, a lot of people thought we did. And we had to do what we, you know, we had to follow the guidelines. And I felt, I followed those guidelines as I needed to do. And as we went through the year and difficult decisions were made on certain things, you know, a student couldn't come to school or a student could be here and all of that. When we finally made, when when the guidelines came out that it could be auctioned, I immediately went to that auction. And I remember a parent who was one of my, you know, she, she was tough on me all year. But one of the things that she said to me in the end was, you know, Mr. Mussera, I have to appreciate, I I knew once that directive came out, you were going to be consistent because you've been consistent. And I appreciate that. And so we understood that. That was one particular area. You know, I think if you're consistent in this role, people will respect that and you can go forward. Another area before COVID, I'm an avid athletic fan. I love the athletics, love the football, I love all of those areas. We had an issue in my previous town, Winter, where we had a hazing issue going on. And I had to come in and deal with the particular situation. And I suspended the, I I took the game and said, we're not going to play. As you can imagine, that would cause a little controversy within your town, especially a a town that, you know, had a pretty good team and all of those things. But that wasn't the issue. The issue was we had to protect our students, we had to make our students learn. And and in that particular case, we also had to educate our community. And sometimes, as in this role, not only are you educating students, but you're also educating the community. And as difficult as it is, and I'm never saying to my principal and athletic director, these are going, this is going to be a very difficult decision. But once you make this decision, and I believe it's the right decision, even though it's a hard and painful decision, it is the right decision to do what we're doing. People will know in the future that you cannot do these types of things. And so that was, that was a particular issue that we did. And I'm proud of the fact that we did that because we didn't just, you know, say that, oh, no, we, we couldn't do that. We we were very, that that was a particular black and white issue that we had to take care of. And I think our students learned from it. And they went on to understand. And it also, it also helped, it goes back to your question beforehand too, of the students who needed that in the community also needed that to understand that all students matter, not just a student who is a football player, but all students. And I think that those, sometimes those decisions have to happen. And that that's all I'm going to say on it because I don't want to go into other details. But but those were difficult decisions and I'm happy that we made those and we did the right thing.
Great, thanks. Wayland is facing a very tight FY twenty-four school budget as one point two million dollars was cut from the original recommended budget. A large part of our budget increase next year includes a forty-eight percent increase in special education expenses. What's your experience working with an extremely tight budget, creative solutions to working with the budget to provide the necessary services for all for all our students, and budgeting for future years? And do you have any experience with MSBA building projects as we've submitted a statement of interest for an elementary building project?
So that, the the latter part, I can answer real quick. I built the Winter High School Middle School. I saw that from beginning to end and currently, I, when I came over to Stonem, I wrote the state, uh, statement of interest where we were approved. And and I'm proud to tell you that we're one year away from a great Stonem High School. So I've had quite a bit of experience in that particular area. And the, so back to your other part, the beginning of your part with regards to budget. Winter, Stonem, we've been faced with those types of issues that you're talking about on a yearly basis. I would work, and one of the things that I did quite a bit, and in, you know, in both communities, I didn't have, in in Winter, when I, when I first joined Winter, I didn't have a business manager. But we, the town and my, and us, we kind of worked together with a town budget director. But really, I became the the business manager. So I had to really work out those financial needs. But in Stonem, we did, however, what we needed to do was really, I had to work with my town managers. I formed real good, strong relationships with both town managers in Winter and in Stonem. In in Winter, I was, my office was right next door to the town. So budget was the number one concern. And I, and you know, when you talk about, it goes back to that first question, I think you asked, the role of superintendent. One thing that I did leave out, you know, I mean, you are the budget manager. There is no question about it. And I spent a lot of time in Winter and in Stonem on the budget. How do we create, what are we going to do? So in in Winter and in Stonem, both communities, we worked together to try to combine a lot of the services because we felt that if we combined, do we need two payrolls? You know, do we need two of of this, one for the town, one for the for the schools? I mean, how can we consolidate those types of services? But before we do that, you have to build that relationship within your town manager. And so I would, you know, both of us had to agree to work together and we did. And then we worked with school committee and the select board, as well as the town advisory committee. We had a tri-board in Stonem, tri-chairs. So that would be your chair of the school committee, your chair of the select board, and your chair of the finance committee. We would meet on a monthly basis to go over exactly what the concerns were. And then we would meet as a tri-board and talk about those things. Our budget, in in Stonem, the budget was due, believe it or not, I would do a budget report and a budget proposal in the end of November for the following year. And the budget was approved, pretty much had to go to town meeting. The final town meeting, of course, is the first month of May, and it would be approved in there. But it was approved long before that, probably sometime at the end of January so that we could get those issues out. So having that, I will tell you, allowed me to be creative as we moved forward. And I used, and one of the things that I would also say to people is that the budget that's presented in January is going to look a lot different when we get to August. But there are going to be ways that we're going to also find what we need to do. We, you know, we came up with some creative ideas too when we had to deal, we had early retirement incentives in the teachers' areas or in U S E S P areas. You know, we would come up with certain things that we could, we could do. I will tell you the other thing is though, I've never cut programs. I like slice a little here and there, but every child deserves, you know, they're in this program. You can't just turn around and you allow them to cut an arts program or cut an athletic program because that affects kids. And these, and this, and we're the only opportunity that they have. So I worked quite a bit on going through the budget. You know, how do I save money here, what can I do, how can I consolidate? I felt that I knew the budget inside out. If I had to freeze, I'd freeze it, you know, so that we could see where we we've had to go. And but I always wanted, I never had the opportunity to really work with a fine to really work with the finance manager of the schools until the last year in Stonem, when we, the town decided that, you know what? Our budget director should be, has the background of knowledge of what the schools are. And I was like, ah, yes, because that's where the most of the money is coming from and that's how we get creative on what our needs are. And so I think that that's a nice, you know, they're, they're moving forward in those areas. But yes, I mean, the budget is, it's, it's a lot of time, a lot of energy and a lot of creative ideas. But more importantly, working with the school committee, I don't know if you have one, but you need a budget subcommittee and we, we would have our principals present to them. We would have folks constantly coming together so that there was no surprises. Because that's the one thing you can never have, is a surprise. You've got to be open and honest every school committee meeting, every time of vote, where you're at, so that the community understands. And you know what? If you do that and you do it correctly, the community's going to support you. They're going to want to get that money in and they're going to want you to have those programs. And I feel that if you look back at the communities I was in, you were able to do some of that.
Great. Thank you.
So what are your thoughts on planning for school safety? And what is your position on police involvement in the schools? Please give examples from previous districts.
So in, in Stonem, we had a resource officer at the middle school and at the high school. Unfortunately, due to funding, we were only able to at one point have it at the high school. I mean, I had the resource officer do the whole district, but primarily they would be at the high school. Safety is, is number one, I would, in Winthrop, I worked with the police chief. Police chief and I were on the same page. We presented at, at conventions. We, when we were building that new high school, we put together a comprehensive safety plan to make sure that that high school and middle school had what it needed to have, that only the committee knew. Because, you know, you can't, when, when it comes to security, it's, it's something that you can't turn around and, and tell, that has to be executive session information. But worked very closely with police chief and the fire chief. We did multiple trains on the Alice training in both communities. Right up before COVID, we were, we were going strong. And then of course, when COVID hit, then that kind of derailed us for a while. Now unfortunately, as, as tragedies around the country happens, you know, it refocuses you very quickly. And we worked with our police force and our firefighters. But I think having a resource officer, I think it's important. I would love to have had a resource officer in every building. Not just to be safe, but to communicate with our kids, for our kids to understand and learn the, the real reasons, you know, connection. They want to have that connection with, with your, uh, safety and your, your police force and, and all of those areas out there. So I, I, it's a number one priority. And as this past year, as I heard what was happening with that and, and the tragedy that occurred in Nashville, it, it's just, it's, it's horrifying to, to, to see those things. And, and you always worry about it. I will tell you, as a superintendent, it never leaves you. You're constantly thinking, what can I do? Making sure, you know, why did I walk through today and is that door open or that? Or when I sit in a room, you know, you, you look to where's my exits and all those types of things. So I think it's just making our kids conscious of it, our staff conscious of it, and providing training and continuously doing that training throughout the year. It's not just fighting, it's those, it's, it's house training. It's, it's, it's constant, different types of training that make our kids comfortable in case there ever is an emergency.
Last question. Is there anything else you would like to tell us about yourself?
So what I would say to you is that my best attribute is that I'm a, I, I deal with relationships. I can build relationships. I have a proven track record of building relationships in wherever I've been. You know, whether it was a drama teacher, you know, building a collaborative community to being a superintendent. And, and the reason I say that, if you take a look at when we built in Winthrop and bringing that school and community together, we got 65% of approval ready. When I was told, we'd be lucky to win, but yet we got 65%. In Stonem, where we're dealing with COVID numbers and all of that escalation fees, we got over 90% of support for the school. I think that means that people trust what we're doing. I think that's really important in this business. And so if you build the relationships and people trust you, because I really believe that those two decisions were pivotal on who I was. If they were going to, you know, support, because I wanted them to see what we were doing, that they trusted me. So I would say I'm somebody that I feel I'm going to give you my heart and soul. I'm going to commit myself to it. I am loyal. And I want people to be happy and successful on it. And so my best attribute could also be my worst attribute. My best attribute is that I'm very committed and work hard. Uh, but my, you know, my worst attribute for me, sometimes I don't know how to turn the clock. So.
Well, thank you very much, John. Do you have any questions you'd like to ask us at this point?
Um, no, I, I know that, what I would say to you is I wish you the best of luck in your, you know, who you're going to select. And if I were to, you know, be the candidate, I would, you know, I might have some questions at that time as I, as I move forward. But I would say at this time, no.
Well, we really appreciate the conversation tonight and you taking the time to meet with us over Zoom like this. So thanks again.
Thank you all and thank you for giving me the opportunity. And best of luck in your decision-making.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Take care.
Great to meet you.
You too.
Sorry I was late, guys. Stuck in traffic.
Oh yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, thank you, Lisa, for being here. Did that work? Can you see us?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank goodness you were here to say.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I can relate. Like every day.
Yeah, but that was very like, having it on the screen. Yeah. It wasn't like having just the computer. Yeah, it was like he was here. It was great. That, I know, that camera thing, whatever it is, it was great.
Our new, new addition to our AV world.
Well, it's a good addition.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are you guys from WSPM? Are you staying for the whole time?
Give them the.
Oh, so you guys are all covering?
Yeah.
Got it.
Are you going on that trip?
You're going to the, you're going to France tomorrow?
No, we're not on the France trip. We're going to San Diego.
Oh, what trip is that?
Yeah, I travel. People sit there. Yeah, thank you.
You know, it was the guy in practice's class that started WSPM.
Really?
Yeah. And it's been so incredible. He's the first leash on WSPM.
They look good. I might be eating a lot of these. My dinner. It's moving.
Yeah, a lot to do before Saturday.
A lot.
Is Saturday the deadline?
Technically Tuesday, but.
Oh, because.
Saturday is usually, because, yeah, because of the holiday on Monday. Because the 15th falls on the weekend, they move it to Monday, but Monday's a holiday, so they move it to Tuesday. But we're just going with the, yeah, that's the thing. We, we were just going with the 15th, telling people we need to be done by the 15th. And I'm actually going out of town Sunday night, so. I need to be done, yeah.
My family that lives in California, apparently because it's a disaster area, even though they weren't affected, they, they don't have to set, put their taxes until October.
Right. Yeah. Because of the fires. Yeah.
Fires or floods?
Was it the, oh, it was the floods. Yeah.
Yeah. I think it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know that that happened.
Yeah, that happens every now and then with different things. But we have a lot to do before, before the day is Saturday.
Timothy Lo.
The guy from David's.
Looks like this must have fallen during a meeting or something.
Can't even tell.
I guess traffic is back.
I know. I noticed that coming down here, actually.
The last time I hit traffic.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Route 30 was like bumper to bumper.
Where do you come, 120 crazy?
Yeah.
I had to leave my office early for dentist appointments for my children.
Oh, really?
I was in my office in Russell and then the dentist appointment's running. So it was like, oh my, I was like, I don't like it. So I didn't want to say that ahead of time, but he said, have, I want to ask if you did want to participate. Where are you in Hilton Head? No, he's working at the Heritage as like a fun thing. He was like, I'm actually in Hilton Head right now, so I can't do it. And I was, huh, where are you? What are you doing?
You're like.
I was like, I hope he hears.
So, you have a thing for school? Well, I've just been curious because today, I wasn't going to show you. I just kind of wondered why.
I wondered if I had to, the superintendent went to.
It's quite a new, right?
Oh, made a relationship.
Yes, that could be, she, she would have liked that. Having a baby shower for my niece. So that's what that was.
Is it a?
Gender reveal?
No, Chris and hers, a Jack and Jill?
Yeah, they're both coming. I told Ben he had to come. He goes, oh, I wasn't really planning on going. I go, everyone else is bringing their spouse and we're hosting it, so you have to come. He's like, oh, okay.
I have to go to one of those in a couple of weeks and Sean's like, who does that?
I think it's super fun.
Really?
We didn't open gifts. I told everybody if they wanted to bring anything, they'd leave it on the table. And we just had like a big.
Really? I think it's more and more popular for you. Right. It used to be years ago.
I just feel like they can be so painful with a gift.
Right. If you don't have a gift, even better.
I was like, you even have to, if you want to bring something, don't wrap it, just throw it on the table. On it, I, everybody was like, this is the best thing.
People seem to get, seem to like be sad, you know, up here.
They didn't have to wrap them, so they're on.
Oh, they weren't wrapped.
I said, no wrapping required. They'll be on display for everybody.
Oh, that's interesting.
If you want, and they will get some.
My niece, I go, sit around, she, what do we do about it? To register, okay, here's a link, but there's nothing on it. I said, okay. So I put the link on the eBay. I clicked it today. It had two things on it, wash, washcloth and a hooded towel. Feel like you need to, we're gonna, it's on there, so probably should populate it. Yeah, she does Xerox, the executive session minutes, we all have to declassify them. You know, I'm on a mission.
Yes.
Maybe between the next two, if we have so much time, I'll do Xerox.
The two from last year, I'm just not a part of, so.
Oh, yeah, on a, yes. I do it all the time. I have one down here before. Uh, no, it was probably the week before. I do it all the time.
Jend does it all the time too. And I'm always like, I don't understand.
I don't know. It just happens. Are you there? I like hit the edge or the other. I don't know.
And then I also, I was going to cinnamon buns and like this super hot frosting fell on me.
Oh, that's perfect. Yeah.
They're good though.
Are those chocolate or hard cam?
I think they're chocolate.
Chocolate. Oh, hello.
Hi.
Hi, Don.
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, Jessica Paul's audience. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi.
Hi, Erica. How are you? Nice to meet you.
Chris Ryan.
Hey, Chris. Nice to meet you.
Ellen Rico.
Yes.
All right. Very nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Jimmy Dowd.
Hey, Jimmy. Pleasure, pleasure. I know I'm sitting here, right?
Well, that's nice. I think you're doing.
Ooh, all right. On the ass. Exactly.
Head of the table.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys having me today very much so. Thanks for coming.
Glad you joined us.
Of course. We want to just get started or we?
I think we, Ellen gave a little.
Jimmy, give my little speech.
Please do.
Hi. So we're going to just go around and introduce ourselves. So you know who everyone is. Hi, um, so we're gonna just go around and introduce ourselves, so you know who everyone is and, and we can tell us and the public who you are, and, and then we have a list of questions that we've put together, so we're just gonna read the questions in a circle. All right, so I'll start.
And we have about ten.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Just to give you some.
I think we were going with your eight and fifteen last night or so, so that's a bit laggy landed on time.
Yeah.
So I'm Ellen Greco, I'm the vice chair of the school committee, Chris wasn't here when we started, so I kind of go over.
Okay. Uh, Chris Ryan, chair of the school, I was stuck in traffic, so. Uh, thanks for being here, we're looking forward to the conversation. Great, great.
And I'm Jeannie Downs, just a member.
Hi, Jeannie.
And Jessica Paulzadi.
Hi, Jess.
I'm Erin Kevin.
I am. Great, so we'll, we'll just dive into the questions. And let's see, so if you could just sort of, you know, in your own words, briefly explain the role of the superintendent. Sure. And what do you see as the most important priorities? Do you see Wayland as having differing priorities than other districts and just sort of elaborate on those pieces? Sure. Sure, well, the superintendency is kind of like writing on a surfboard right now, it's, and I don't write surfboards, so that's good, but ultimately, it is to ensure that the students in this district get everything they need. And that is by managing and working with the staff members, the teachers, the community, the school committee, and the students themselves, to ensure that we have a solid understanding of what the goals and priorities are for our kids, and then we put together a solid strategic plan to meet those particular goals. Now, there's no particular order to that. We always find that there are different things that, that come up day by day. So the ability to be able to roll with those waves and kind of get through each day is an important piece of this job. But more importantly, to have deliverables at the end, and that is the education for all of our students, regardless of who they are, whether they're high academic learners, whether they're low academic achievers, diverse learners, you name it, we have, our job is to make sure that those kids get what they need. In terms of social skills, academic skills, and I would just say to become the greatest learners and, and people they can be when they graduate. Okay, thank you.
Should we, I think we skipped having you introduce yourself.
Yeah, I think you should, because I think you should say.
Love to, love to, so I'm Tim Love. I'm currently the deputy superintendent in Natick Public Schools. I don't want that to fool you too much, the deputy is part of the title. You know, I know that I have some competition with past previous superintendents. But in two thousand eighteen, our superintendent in Natick left abruptly in January of that year. Dr. Anna Noel and I, at that point, took over kind of acting superintendent duties for about three months before she became the interim, and I supported her a hundred and fifty percent in that. But since that day, we've been making decisions for the school district side by side, behind closed doors, we debate, we have our conversations, but we come out in a unified front, and those decisions have been made regularly through us. My experience as a special ed administrator for many years, I think is the, the missing piece that some people may say, you know, superintendents come under fire for a lot of things, how do they deal with conflict, how do they deal with different things? In that particular case, I think I have been dealing with and making decisions that are very personal to families, more so than other roles in the, in the district. And I think I've successfully weathered that and given parents a piece that their children are getting what they need, but also giving the kids the best service that they need to do. So I feel like I have that, that role well in hand, both sides of it. As a precursor to that, I grew up in Natick, Mass. I actually worked as a special needs volunteer and a, and a staff member at Camp Arrowhead in Natick for many, many years before I went up to Maine Farmington and I got my special ed and psychology degree, bachelor of science in both. I then worked in the, in the main school systems for many years, both as a special ed teacher at all levels, and even a day treatment program at the middle school level. And went on to become an assistant director of special services and a director of special services, while attaining my educational leadership degree from the University of Southern Maine. That opened my eyes to diversity in a way that I hadn't imagined it would as a, as a person who grew up in Metro West. The poverty levels there, I think we were ninety percent free and reduced lunch for, it was, it was eight towns and transportation all over the place, takes kids forty-five minutes to get to school from different places. We did have a wonderful central middle school and a vocational, we call it comprehensive high school, that allowed kids to, you know, do math class upstairs and then automotive downstairs, which was fantastic. About eleven and a half years ago, I moved back down to Natick, I took the director of student services job there. I was thrilled, last time I interviewed, by the way, so if I'm nervous at all, it's because it's been a while. We really made some huge headway in Natick in that, in that program, and I can share with you those things as we get there. Ultimately, I got promoted to the assistant superintendent, had a short stint as an acting superintendent there in the middle, and was promoted to deputy superintendent last year, more so because I've been doing the work of the central administration. So at this point in time, I share oversight of, actually, I have primary oversight of human resources, social emotional learning, special education, English language learning services, nursing, guidance, McKinney Vento, you name it, and I'm pretty much there. I handle all the public records requests for the district, I do all the open meeting law complaints and processes for the district. In Natick, we had six hundred at one point, if you read the papers back in the day, in about a year. You know, and rightfully so, you know, some folks just want to make sure that we're following the process appropriately and, and we followed through with that, we all learned very quickly what it meant to, to follow through and process open meeting law complaint, and we even had the first mediation that the state's ever offered in that process, which was interesting. I'm now pursuing my executive juris doctorate in education. Now, for the lawyers out here, it's not going to be a formal law degree where I'll be practicing, and I don't want to practice, so I, you know, sorry. But what I did want, when I looked at my doctoral work, is I wanted something that was meaningful, that I could use on the job day by day, and that I could, didn't break the bank for, for me or for anybody that was supporting me doing that. The program has been phenomenal, at Purdue Global University Concord Law School. You know, once I got past the contracts and the tort stage, which was fun to do while you're having a full-time job, I've gone on to things like cybersecurity, I've gone on to things like education law, employment discrimination, and they have all been fantastic, they, they are in play in every aspect of this position. And so I support the district now in, in really everything legal that comes up. I'll write responses to due process hearings for special ed, you know, I'll develop contracts, you know, we work in negotiations, I'll, I'll work on the contracts there, just a variety of different things, and it's, it's fun, it's exciting, and it's worthwhile, because it's, you know, I have the ed leadership piece, I have my superintendent license, I've had it, and this just gives me something, you know, another arrow in my quiver to really use in the job. Other than that, I'm here in Wayland today because, not because I don't have a position, I'm very secure in the job. But I'm here in Wayland today because the community I value, I grew up next to it. You know, and I know there is some questions about what happens with the superintendency, whether, you know, the current superintendent comes back into the role or someone new comes in next year. But I'm here because I want to be here, I want to support a valued community and the members of the community. There is a, I don't know if it's, I'm a glutton for punishment, but the opportunity to come in and to build on something that has a really strong foundation like Wayland does is really intriguing for me. I look at, you know, your, your expansion of your Metco program, one hundred and thirty-three students now, and you're gonna be adding a preschool program for that next year, I think that's phenomenal. I reviewed your school improvement plans and your district improvement plans, they have all the key things, you know, data teams and professional learning communities and social emotional learning and, you know, math, advanced achievement for, for different subgroups and so on, it's really exciting to really see that work and the foundation that you have and to, and to build on that. So that's why I'm here, and that's, that's me in a nutshell. Happy for the next question or any kind of things you want to ask otherwise. Can we just have a clarifying question? So your current title is deputy superintendent, so in a smaller district like Wayland, that would be the equivalent of an assistant superintendent, isn't that right? Many folks have assistant, so I was assistant superintendent for student services prior. We also have an assistant superintendent for teaching and learning innovation, assistant superintendent for finance. Really, the title is kind of one step up, so I work with the superintendent to manage all aspects. So I'll work with our finance departments, you know, and supervise, I'll work with our, our, our teaching and learning folks, I'll work with our special ed folks, HR folks, technology, I'm guiding everyone along with the superintendent. So whereas many are structured on certain pieces, this is kind of an overarching role that they gave me because I was kind of doing the work anyway. Okay, thanks, sure.
Okay, second question. Our staff and families have been through a lot the past few years, how do you envision working with the administrative staff and families to improve morale and trust? Please give specific examples, including effective communication with stakeholders and how would you work and communicate with the school community?
So I heard a lot of questions about stability last night. It's traumatizing when you have this kind of rift in the middle of a school year. We experienced that again in two thousand eighteen when our superintendent left. But really, it's, the starting point is listening, the starting point is about empathy. We don't understand where people are and, and, and how they are feeling at the moment, whether it's a sense of belonging or a sense of fear, then we're not going to go anywhere. So the first thing is listening to each and every administrator, each and every teacher that wants to kind of come in, constituents in the community, school committee. You know, as far as kind of walking through that, I think we're doing these things in Natick right now called, you know, and as, as a, as a acting superintendent, I don't see an entry plan necessarily, you know, where you might go and you might have those conversations to build on, maybe, maybe that's the, you know, kind of the conversation that we can have in the future. We're doing these things called exit, or I'm sorry, stay interviews. And what that does is you meet with the staff and you really don't have a conversation, you know, when somebody leaves, you might have a conversation about why they're leaving, you know, what are those things and why are you leaving? These are stay interviews that we're, that we're having, where you identify those things that are valuable to them. What would make them stay, what would make this district stronger? And what could we do as a community to support those teachers in staying for a longer period of time? And what happens there, it's more than just the stay piece, they end up having conversations about everything. You know, these are my concerns, these are the things that I do, these, these are the things that I'm worried about. They might talk about their family, they might talk about their students, they might talk about a challenge in their life, and, and it opens up that, that opportunity. Regular scheduled meetings with everyone, I find that when I, when we have meetings on the books, then they're on the books and they don't get lost, and if you don't schedule them early on, then you lose out. So whether that's with your regular principal meetings that you have at council, your cabinet, I think you might have a cabinet, I'm not sure what, what function that is right now, to be honest, with your central office administrators. It might be meetings with your, with your union, right, leaders. It'll be meetings with the school committee, I think having the budget subcommittees and the policy subcommittees are all really important to do for that communication, regular communication with the chair or the vice chair, depending on how your norms roll, and that's kind of an ongoing always, always kind of a thing. Communications with families, so they know what's happening in the school district, I would say on a weekly basis or so. Communication with teachers on a weekly basis, we have a letter called the Engage that engages families on, on a weekly basis, and the Insider, which is a staff letter, so we can share with them what, what's happening in the district. But ultimately, I know, I heard last night that it's the school committee's responsibility to kind of stabilize, and, and I agree. And I also heard the conversation, it was actually intriguing about the kayaks and the, and the holes in the kayaks, and I think about it more like a whitewater raft, you know, where the water's always coming through and this, you're always going, you know, you're gonna hit these rapids, you know, and you have somebody in the back of the boat that's kind of guiding you and everybody on the boat with their paddles, and you have to go in the right direction, right, to really do that. If you've been whitewater rafting, you know, if you haven't, you should go, it's really wonderful. But I'd like to be that guide for the school community to be able to do that. And I feel like the empathy piece is probably the most important part of it all. And I know that's part of your, your mission, which was one of the other reasons that I was like, oh, this is fantastic. But it's really those conversations, regular conversations and regular communication with the family. So people don't feel that fear, that unknown to fill the, the void. I think I got most of the question, but.
Thank you. Um, can you, you've, you've told us a little bit about your special ed background, but can you describe a little bit more of your experience with special education services and the balance between providing what the students need and managing the cost of those services to the town?
How long have we had this to happen now? Let me start with my kind of vision on special ed, and that's that every student can achieve at high levels. Like, I really believe that, and I've always believed that from my time as a special ed teacher, even my, my volunteer camp days to now. And again, it's not a one size fits all model, right, it never can be, it never, never should be. I always find that, you know, we, teams, when they get together, will, will sit with families, and families will hear things like, well, we don't do that here, or we can't do that here because of the finance, or it's, you know, this isn't what your kid needs, why would you say that? So when I first come in, came into Natick, I coined a term called complacency, now I know it's kind of silly, but it's kind of a mixture of compliance and empathy, I'm gonna use empathy over and over again, I gotta be careful doing that, but. And I talked to teams, I said, I want you to feel, you know, you know, when you are at a table with a family and you have, you know, five, six, seven, eight school people and one parent, that's a very intimidating thing. And still, even for me today, after the bajillion IEP team meetings that I've had and I've run, you know, it's intimidating also, so how, how is that parent gonna feel? So it's a very delicate balance, because you need to identify what the student needs, and that team makes that decision, even the superintendent can't override what that decision of that team is. Having said that, making the right decisions for the kids as a team is the best, and there are legal compliance issues that have to be followed. So without going outside of those bounds, you also have to identify what you can do within the school district to provide those services internally, so kids can be educated with their same age non-disabled peers, right at home, at their home school, in a way that's good for them and good for their families, with their peers. I've done a, I've developed an incredible amount of programs in Natick and in my previous district and in Maine. So I know you have programs for students with autism at, at least at, at one of your elementary schools, your middle school, high school. I know you have programs for emotional behavioral, students with emotional behavioral issues at your elementary, middle and high, I think it's Clay, Clay Pitt, right, has those. I know you have a language-based program that you just developed, I think it's, maybe started this year or maybe starting next year, which is great, I would, I'm not sure how, how the special educators and that kind of resource setting run, but along with that, you'd want to train those staff members on Orton-Gillingham approaches, so kids can get those services right in their resource level, and you have a continuum of those services too. What you don't want to do is to get to a point where you don't have the services in district, so the students have no other choice but to have to go out of district and leave their town to, to get their, their school. You know, when you take away your, your circuit breaker reimbursement costs and all those kind of things, one student going out of district could, could cost you seventy-five thousand dollars or so, just, you know, in, in terms of finances. And so if you can build those internal programs and keep them running, now in a smaller district, it's more difficult because you might have fewer students, right, and not a cohort, but that has to be a regular analysis of how to do that. And that's, that's hugely important. You know, as far as containing costs when they go out of, if they have to go out of district, you might look at collaboratives first, obviously. I know you're part of Accept now, yes, no, you didn't, you're part of Tech, that was supposed to, okay, that was on the, on the, on the board for this year, but. But there are collaboratives that are lesser costs, and I don't like talking about special ed and cost, like, it's one of those icky things, because you want to, you, it's about the kids and the kids' needs. But if you can have professional development for your staff members, where you're providing very research-based instructional methods that really work and that are implemented with fidelity, you can do a tremendous amount to save on cost for, for special education. You know, I've been in districts, I've been with colleagues who have, you know, they're special educators who don't actually teach, right, they're there to support the students, but they're not actually providing any specially designed instruction. So about two years ago, I remember sitting with my, my special ed coordinator team, and I said, we're gonna put the special back in specially designed instruction, we're gonna give you more training, we're gonna focus on the goals, we're gonna deliver on those goals in a way that's, that's robust for kids, and that's obviously very important. I developed this, I shouldn't say I developed it, but I implemented this thing called a self-determination learning model of instruction in Natick, I started probably back in two thousand fifteen. And the idea behind it is to build self-awareness skills for kids, and we started with the special ed students, only because it was kind of my brainchild, and I, we kind of went backwards and expanding. But it's really about kids identifying areas of strength, identifying areas of needs for themselves, understanding what those are, setting goals to kind of mitigate those challenges, you know, figure out what supports they should access, whether it's your teacher, your family, whatever it is, and then kind of implementing that plan and that goal that they set. And then kind of implementing that plan and that goal that they set for themselves, obviously with facilitation from, from us. And then analyzing how that went, you know, what were the struggles? You know, did I meet that goal? Is there something that I could do differently? And it's not failure, it is definitely not failure. It's an outcome that might be something that they, they weren't looking for. But then coming back to it, kind of going through that process again. I did that because I first had, when I was in Maine, I had, I heard this thing about student-led IEPs, you know, and I'm like, all right, we'll get these kids together, we'll get them to lead their IEPs, it'll be fantastic. But, you know, when I, I started with that thought process, it didn't work the way you would want it to. I spoke to some, some high-level professionals. Colleen Toma was one of them, I forget the university issue, I don't know who wrote a book about student-led IEPs and parent involvement. And then we worked with Dr. Lori Peterson at the University of Northern Colorado. And I learned that the kids have to learn self-determination skills first before they can step up in front of that, in front of that table. What we have now is this pre-K through age 22 model where kids are learning self-determination skills and goal attainment setting kind of processes at all levels. And then that can culminate at the preschool level, for example, in a presentation that the student makes about, you know, what, what they want. I, there was one about, you know, I really liked the support from my dad, my social worker, and you know, something about the mom and helping her with, helping with a Band-Aid or something like that, just. And, you know, it really becomes, they become self-aware. We have kids at the, at the elementary level who are recording themselves, talking about how they learned their reading skill and what the challenges were and what they're doing. Kids at the middle school level who, who kind of open up their computer, they have a PowerPoint about, you know, who, who I am, right? This is what I like, this is what I do, these are my, these are my challenges, my struggles. This is what the teachers can do to help me in class, right? And that helped them then develop the accommodations and the services that they would get. And it all comes about the student. And I had kids at the high school fully running their IEP from the beginning to the end with technology. It's been fantastic. That did slow down a hair during COVID because when we went to virtual meetings, it became very difficult. We were trying to figure out how to run IEPs again. But all those things and all those skill-building sets, all those instruction, you know, all the instruction that the special ed teacher can give are all the preventative measures for a kid needing more services or needing to be placed out of district. And if you have that foundation, that's, that's going to be the, the cost-saving measure. So.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
I'm so busy listening. All right, so why are you interested in pursuing the acting superintendent position in Wayland in July of 2023 specifically? And what do you believe you can contribute to the Wayland Public Schools, our students, staff and families and the Wayland community in that position if you are hired? How would you prepare for starting in Wayland?
Well, for me, this is a right place, right time kind of conversation. As I said previously, you know, Wayland's always had a special place kind of in my heart. I didn't say that, but I, I thought that. You know, I grew up in Natick, I grew up right on Pamela Road, actually, so pretty close to the Wayland Lion, so I spent a lot of time here. And there are a few districts that I would apply to. You know, Natick is out there, I know they're looking for an interim. I, I feel like I'm at a point where I have to break myself away from the current superintendent, who's actually going to Newton. And I, you know, and I, and I love Natick and I, I love everything about it, but I need some, I want something different, right? It's been 11 years, it's time for me to, to kind of go on and kind of show that I'm more than just a person in the back door, right, in the back room that is really making those decisions and it's important to me. And not that that's all I'm doing and people see me, but Wayland is, I think, you know, in, in need of someone who can stabilize, who can provide the whole picture, not just as a superintendent, but understand, not superintendent who, who might just have their folks do stuff, but as a person who understands all the intricacies of the school department. I talked to you about the HR functions, I talked to you about the social and emotional learning functions, I talked to you about supervision evaluation of staff, special education, ELL, technology. I have all those things and I, and I want, I want, I want to bring them to a place where I can build a team that will go with me. And, and, and with that, rolling in the right direction, in the same direction, you're going to have a community that is going to hopefully feel supported by the schools and feel as if they, their kids are getting what they need on a daily basis. I feel like I can bring a sense of belonging to, to staff. I, I feel like, you know, the, at the administrative team in Natick, for example, one of my primary functions there is to ensure that they have everything that they need every day. And so many of the, many, much of my day is, is on the phone. They're calling me about whether it's a disciplinary issue or it's an academic issue, whatever it is, so they feel supported, so they can then support their staff to support their kids. I feel like I can bring a shield, so to speak, I guess, from the political landscape to the staff because I understand and I know the intricacies. And I just feel like I can really, really provide the community with a leader who, who listen, empathize, and, and work with them in the best interest of our kids. On top of that, I think the partnerships that I have built with our talent partners is incredibly important. These decisions that we have for our students impact everyone in this community, whether you are a parent of a student here or a community member who might be struggling. They impact everyone. And if those conversations and those partnerships aren't occurring, then, then we're failing in a way, because we're here for the community, as well as our students. So I, I bring those relationship-building skills as well to, to the, to the plate. And I'm really excited to try that here. I just, kind of a blank slate, not a blank slate, you have incredible people here. What a, an opportunity to, to build an even greater team than you already have.
Wayland families are looking for a superintendent who will listen and put student needs first. Wayland teachers are accustomed to autonomy. How can you balance relationships with both families and our educators so that our students get what they need for success? Please provide examples from your experience.
I honestly think, you know, and I don't know if you, if you, if you negotiated your successor agreement yet with the, with the union. I know, I think it was ending this year, I'm not sure, in the process. But I always think about the inter space bargaining process, kind of as we talk about this. And in that model, you're identifying issues with the teachers together, right? You're not coming out and not saying, hey, I want this, and then saying, I want this, and then kind of clashing, going into caucus and meeting back and forth, you're not doing that. You're actually saying, hey, we have a, a concern, an issue, this that we want addressed during the negotiation process. And that might be a financial matter, right? It might be that the funding sources that we have for X, Y and Z are, are impacting the community. And what hap, or in, from the teacher's side, it might be, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, we're not having to teach everyday speech. We want to try something, every, I'm sorry, everyday math, we want to try something new, right? Let's, let's, you know, and you kind of go through the process, the issues get on the table, and then you, you kind of discuss the issues and you lay out options, right? And at the end of the day, you go through all those options as a team together. And then you determine whether they're, you know, they're responsive to the issue at hand and the concern, whether they're feasible, can it be managed? And whether they're, the last one is reasonable. I apologize, RFA is, well, I want to keep on, keep on going. You have those conversations and then, for example, for the, the options would then be discussed. You, you picked the best one, you picked the best one and you come to a mutual agreement on how that works. And I think that's the same method that you would use with it all. So if you have those, those kind of processes in place, then as a team, you come together to a conclusion and you solve the issues for both the community and for the teacher at the same time. I also believe very deeply in having those regular meetings with, with the teachers to ensure that you're hearing their voice on a regular basis. You know, why is it, let's, let's kind of go to a root cause analysis of the, of the concern, you know? Why do they want to be autonomous in their teaching? Are there other options where we can give them, you know, we're going to have flexibility where we can do that, but also do some things that are really important for the school committee and the community? I find that these things best happen when we do our building visits and try to get out in the building every day. There's not a better time to actually hear from teachers than when you're walking in, popping into their classroom and saying hi. I always find that they pull you off to the side and they say, hey, X, Y and Z, this is happening, what do you think about this? And we have those conversations and then we follow up afterwards. It's really building the relationships that matter more than anything else. And if you can do that, then you can solve problems together. Now, they might not be exciting on both sides for everyone, but you solve them. And then a new one comes up and you solve that one. But it really is, it's really listening for empathy and, and understanding and having those structures in place to have those conversations and processes to really, to really meet those needs.
The committee takes its anti-racism resolution seriously. We have families of color who live in our town and who live in Boston. Please describe specific ways in which you provided advancement for students of color and other marginalized student populations in your previous districts and share what actionable item steps you have taken to improve communication, acceptance and ensure all families, and more specifically, families of color and other marginalized groups feel welcome in our schools.
So let me start by saying that every single student that enters the door of their classroom or their school needs to feel represented in every single way. And that can be by a staff, that can be by the curriculum that they have. You know, I know you have your community bookshop, which is, which is great, things like that because they need to be represented. And that can be a student of color, that can be a student of a different class, disability, a student who identifies as a different gender, transgender, you name it. They need to be represented and feel welcome for that. So we try to infuse curriculum into our, into our schools that is representative. And when challenged on that, we've had very serious conversations with families about why it's so important to do that and that every kid needs to feel safe and represented. But we, we listen and we have those conversations because, you know, we are, I'm going to be everybody's superintendent, you know? It's not just the folks who, who want the curriculum or don't want the curriculum, it's, it's everyone. And there's no pass on, on who you can or can't listen to or shouldn't listen to. In terms of how we deal with, with different issues, you know, any intentional or egregious act of racism should be dealt with with a sledgehammer, so to speak, right? But it's those microaggressions that we see every day that are, I think, more prevalent that we have to use a scalpel approach to get to. So that means, you know, we're an education, a teaching and learning organization. So, you know, if it's a student microaggression, then we have those conversations with the student. We have the conversations, it could be mediation with the students, it could be conversations, it's about teaching and learning, about why those incidents or those behaviors resulted in a racist outcome and what we can do differently, almost using that self-determination model to kind of change that outcome. With staff members, it's a, it's a similar approach, right? Everyone is at a different level of learning in everything that we do in an organization. And that also goes with, with DEI. So, you know, if a staff member has an incident or a behavior that, that results in some kind of a racist outcome, we bring them in and we talk to them about it. And it's really that point right there that you have that conversation, you know, because you're having it as a, as a conversation to supervise, to work with them, to, to try to come to a, an idea of, of how may the other person feel and why, you know, why it's, it's considered a, you know, a racism. And it's their reaction to that that tells a lot of the story. You know, we had, I just, we had this one staff member who had said, you know, told a young black lady in his class who was holding a computer, get your cotton picking hands off that. And what a great opportunity that would have been to say, wow, there's some old slang that we used to use, you know, that is not appropriate anymore, you know? And, and I made an error and I'm sorry, let's talk about this, let's have a conversation. Instead, I got the, here's, you know, the, the dictionary and the, and the Google search for cotton picking and the origins and, you know, and then, and that was met with a much harsher hand and, and kind of DEI equity coursework than it, it could have been a, let's work with the class and see how we can make this a lesson in a teaching moment rather than a, a moment of discipline. And those happen all the time, so, you know, we had our entire administrative team, I think, two years ago, really, go through diversity, equity and inclusion training with Calice Warne, I don't know if you know Calice, she was wonderful, really talking about having the conversations and having the courageous conversations and making sure that we are addressing it when we see it, identifying it and then having those uncomfortable conversations about how to move forward. So as an administrative team, we've worked through that. We've had similar workshops at, at the elementary, middle and high school level for our staff and our kids, at the high school level especially. So we're, we're fusing the conversations and the courageous behavior into our curriculum every day. And we continue to do that on a regular basis. Everyone needs to feel safe. You know, folks who are, are victims of, of these kind of things need to feel safe. There need to be actions to make sure that they don't occur again and that they feel comfortable with the process that we follow to, to nip it, I guess, so to speak, and teach. The, this is not something that we're going to solve in a day, there's no doubt. Like I said, everyone is a different level and I would say members of the community are a different level too. So it's listening and understanding and empathizing on where folks are, meeting them where they are, having those conversations and, and trying to move forward in, in our learning. And that's, yeah. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. Could you provide a concrete example from your past experience as superintendent or deputy superintendent where you were faced with a difficult conflict involving at least two or more parties or a challenging time for the district? Describe the nature of the conflict or challenge, how you approached it and what was the result of your intervention? And if you had to do it all over again, what would you have done differently?
We have a fresh one. You know, obviously athletics, sorry, athletics are a very important part of any community. And many of our coaches are beloved coaches for various reasons. And, and coaching and, and playing sports is a little bit different than being in the academic classroom. We had some parents come to, come to us, actually come to me and share some concerns they had regarding the coaching staff and things that made kids feel unsafe. There was conversations about not pursuing that just because it wasn't a huge starting point and because this particular coach was, was beloved so much. And I made the decision to move forward and get more input from families to determine if there was a pattern to, to what we heard. And by doing that, I think I had more than 23 families come forward who were afraid to come forward before because their kids were afraid of the retaliation that might occur in their, in their everyday sport life. And I'm trying not to be too specific. And from there, we ended, ended up interviewing more than 20 students, players and different coaches. It took quite some time, but we identified a significant amount of retaliation, a significant amount of fear that kids just should not have to feel when they go to school or they play a sport, regardless of how beloved the person was. And so we went through the process and fortunately for us, coaches are seasonal employees, so we had the option of, of not having the person back in the following year. So it's ongoing, so we'll see how that goes in the end. But ultimately, the idea that we take very seriously every issue that comes to us that deals with student safety is important. And we don't let the difficult thought of what could come stop us from doing the right thing. And I would do it over the same way, I think. I'm sure there were missteps in the way, but really getting the kids' feelings out there, collecting that data and that evidence on what, what occurred. And then, I mean, maybe if anything, maybe if anything, I, I would have tried to act sooner, right? And tried to do some preventative measures, you know, with the athletic teams to let them know that you come to us if there are issues and we will solve them. So this is an incident that was going, these were going on for three years and we had no knowledge. So what mechanisms could we put into place then to, to know sooner, so we can act sooner and do what's right for kids?
All right, we're going to turn a little.
I'm just saying one quick thing. I actually bumped into one of your students in, well, I need a student while shopping, who shared some of that information as we were, as he was waiting with us. So it just jumped my memory. And he was a great kid. Both families said he was a great kid.
Good kids.
All right, we turn to finance.
Oh, sure.
So Wayland's facing a very tight fiscal '24 school budget as $1.2 million was cut from the original recommended budget. A large part of our budget increase next year includes a 48% increase in special ed expenses. What's your experience working with an extremely tight budget? Creative solutions to working with the budget to provide the necessary services for all of our, all students and budgeting for future years? And do you have any experience with MSBA building projects as we've submitted a statement of interest for an elementary building project?
So I'll save that for, for the end. So the budget process, I think, to be honest with you, needs to focus on a strategic plan. And I know you had one years ago, and I know you have, I haven't seen one for a while. I think that is by far the best thing that a district could do because it gives the town and the schools an idea of what's going to be necessary over the next five years. It's a heads up, right? And then genuinely, you're working together to determine what you can do each year to put that plan together. That might be a building project, it might be a new curriculum, it might be, you know, working on, you know, a social, emotional, learning staff member. Who knows? It could be anything. But really focusing on those so you have a plan set and doing that with your community partners early and often. You know, I know the budget subcommittee gets together, I think, beginning in January. But I wonder, and I, I don't know because I don't see the background, I wonder how many of those conversations happen early on about what the appropriation might be with the town before that gets there, right? So you're kind of coming to these agreements, hashing out these conversations before it gets to the public and, not in private, but before it gets to the point where you have to have that public input, just so you're on the same page. It's more of an avoiding of the issue, obviously. If you have a plan, hopefully you don't have that gap. I'm not sure if there was, if it was unavoidable or not. A lot of things are, are avoidable if you can, if you can have those conversations early and often. Grants, I tell you, I, you know, I look them at the website and the finance pages. I didn't see a lot about ESSER or ARPA, so I'm not sure where Wayland is there right now. But use a grant funding wherever you can to support your, your initiatives in the town. There's the option, you know, I'm not sure, you know, during our, our time of COVID, there were some savings. So we started initiating prepay models because you can prepay for special ed address replacements if you want to. Those are definitely options that you have. Hopefully, you're not getting to cuts, but, but looking at different programs that are, that are not as valuable to everyone. Having said that, I think the community, together in those conversations and the plan, help you determine what those priorities are in your district, whether it's for new budget items that you want and you need, or it's for items that you might not need anymore. So when you get to the, the $1.4 million, and I think part of that funding, I believe, is the 14% from OSD, the increase, so hopefully there's some relief coming there. We'll, we'll see, that would be very nice. In Natick, what we do is we try to, I always try to keep a significant amount of money in our circuit breaker revolving account for those cushions, those just in cases. So for example, and this is, you know, we have an $80 million budget, probably 25 goes to special ed and student services, guidance, everything. But I try to keep about $800,000 in there for things that, that come up, whether it's an unanticipated address replacement for a student that moved in or for things like 14% that pop up on you. So it's really trying to have those preventative measures in place prior. I know, I think that you're doing the step of the special ed stabilization fund with the town now, what I heard, which is great, so you'll have to get those votes to get the money out. But that is also definitely a good model to, to ensure that those unanticipated costs are handled. Obviously, with staffing, you know, you're, you have a, I think, 92% experienced staff per DESI, which is fantastic, I look at your data. You know, so there, you know, there's attrition savings that you can look at over time for staff. Obviously, in negotiating your contracts, there are ways to provide incentives to teachers without necessarily going on a higher rate of pay. But those, again, come down to relationships and conversations with, with the teachers to make sure that you're on, you're on the same page about where you want to go as a district. The MSBA building project piece, I have been part of completing the statement of interest both, both for Kennedy Middle School, and currently we're doing one that we're submitting, I think, Monday for a new memorial build or, or fix. So I've done the statement of interest process. I have been part of the feasibility study process where I've developed a lot of that for Kennedy on the special ed side, English language learner side. I went to the initial meetings with MSBA about those pieces. I was not part of the building project committee, but I was abreast of it all the, the whole way. Now we have a gorgeous new Kennedy Middle School that just got finished at the end of last year. Obviously, the vote was, was, is always difficult to get, but overwhelmingly passed. So I got there, I got to Natick just as Natick High School was being torn down and rebuilt. So I got to see the construction, but wasn't part of it then. So I have, I have a good overview of the process and what we need to do to do that. If you did your statement of interest now, you're probably three tries before the next, before you get in. But you got to start early, so.
This is our second try.
Second try, so you've got one more to go. But that's good. Can I ask what, what school are you looking at?
Yeah, Clay, but.
Okay, great, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, I should say, I'm pumped that you guys got Susan back.
Susan Bojant?
Yeah, I was, I was wondering, I'm like, okay, so the business manager is probably the most important position, you know? Not that I, I don't have, have the knowledge, but that is a really important position to make sure that you were doing everything correctly, and so, good for you.
So what are your thoughts on planning for school safety? What is your position on police involvement in the schools? Please give examples from previous districts.
Sure. So I've run the school safety initiative in Natick since I came in 2012. And what that is, is collaboration, kind of a annual meeting. We have, we have a district-wide safety team, that's our first responders, our school principals, our transportation department, anyone that could be involved in any kind of a crisis emergency situation. And we talk about all the events that, that occur regularly, debrief them, kind of walk through, you know, what if that happened here, what could we do differently, those kind of things. We also develop overall crisis intervention plans and procedures for the schools. You know, we recommend it, and I put into place, I think we have like 200, you know, police radios in all of our classrooms, you know, through grant funding and different things that we've done to, to make sure our staff members are feeling like they can communicate in an emergency. We have piloted and, and a huge amount of different programs that you can use on your phone to emergency alert systems, that kind of a thing. None really worked great, by the way. And now that Google's out there and you can have a drive with those things in them, like it kind of takes that, that needle away. Google Chat's a good way to communicate too. Always found that if you had a program you didn't use regularly, it wasn't being used. So in an emergency, if you don't, you know, if it's, you don't use it regularly, you don't have it. From there, we have crisis intervention teams at each school. So these are focused social workers, principals, it might be a school resource officer, and I'll get to that, that part of the question in a minute. Special ed staff, depending on if you have a student with a disability that needs to be part of an emergency evacuation plan, how you're dealing with that. And they coordinate training with their staff at the beginning of every year and continue training throughout the year. So all of those things are incredibly important. In terms of SROs in the building, I see an SRO more as a social worker, to be honest with you. I know nationally, that's not always the norm. But when our SROs are in the building, they are there not only to ensure safety, but primarily to, to work with students and their social, emotional needs. Now, having said that, there are some students that will look at police officers differently, you know, in fear. But we have to be cognizant of that and make sure that we're, we're addressing things in a way that works for them. But they are, they are another form of our social, emotional, learning staff. And they are there to support, and I wholeheartedly want them there. I think they're important in that aspect of it. You know, with an appropriate memorandum of understanding, and every district has to have one, you outline what they're required, what their duties are, what their roles are. And that is not there to police students, they are not there to police students. They are there to support students' social, emotional needs. And if they are not doing that, then we have an MOU question that we have to address with the, with the chief of police and how we're going to change that, that mentality and that behavior. I have not seen that ever in Natick. I have not seen an SRO that has, has been a, you know, primarily a police officer. They have always primarily been there for kids for social, emotional needs, acting as almost counselors. And two of them that we've had actually had guidance counselor backgrounds. One became a guidance counselor for us afterwards and then went back to the police force. So they have the training, and we ensure that they go through all the training that we do in terms of our onboarding, so they understand our students' special needs, they understand how to interact with all of our students in a way that, that supports them rather than polices them. You're welcome.
Is there anything else you would like to tell us about yourself?
Okay, oops, sorry about that. Again, I'm here because I, I want to be here, I want to be in Wayland. And, and I know there's no absolute certainty about, about anything. That drives me a little bit. I very much enjoy and operate in a way that is collaborative, collegial, calmly, in a way that provides outside-the-box thinking in kind of a visionary way to solve issues. I believe that every student can achieve at high levels. I believe that our high achievers need to continue to achieve higher. I believe that every student needs to feel safe and, and feel belonging in their schools. And I will work tirelessly, tirelessly and with ethics and compassion as I do that. Again, you know, I'm, I'm a sitting deputy here, but I have the experience and the drive to not really be your acting superintendent, but depending on how things turn out, I would love the opportunity to continue to be here for the Wayland students and the community for years to come, if that opportunity comes to fruition. So, that's me in a nutshell. I am, I'm just really happy that you guys invited me in today, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's great, appreciate it.
Thank you for sending one in.
Thank you very much.
Do you have anything you'd like to ask us at this time?
I think I'll just, I'll watch Friday or Thursday or Monday, or we'll see what goes on. But, no, I, I think, well, I mean, if I had the opportunity, you know, what are you looking for in a super? I know you can't be certain, but what are you looking for? Like, this is like, next year would be an audition, right? For not just for, for me, but for me auditioning you, so what is it you're looking for? Is that too much of a broad question?
Why are you looking at me?
I think we're looking for someone with integrity, with a collaborative approach that's willing to listen and work together with our super community of parents, students, teachers, administrators, and help us to just kind of recover.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
I would add flexibility.
Yep. And I'd love your, every student can do a hard job.
Thank you, that's true.
And it has been a really hard couple of years. I mean, it was COVID, and then we've had a hard couple of years on top of that. And so I think that, like Erin said, just, we're looking for someone to help us move forward from where we are at this point, knowing that, as you said, we don't know a lot, so.
Well, you have an extremely strong foundation, so I wouldn't, it doesn't, I know the outside looking in might seem like it feels tumultuous right now, but, you know, when you, when you read under what's going on, you have so much, so much going on. So be happy to be the person to help you move that forward and balance at the same time, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks again for being here.
Thanks, very nice meeting you. Great to meet you. Nice meeting you. Take care, I'll come do my rounds here.
Great to meet you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for reaching out to us.
Bye, guys, thank you so much.
Bye.
Good night.
Thank you for coming in.
Getting a rash.
It looks like a bite.
I know, like right here.
Just the rays, oh.
I didn't see a bug.
I don't know.
Hello.
Hi. We need time to take a break between. Hi. Should we go to the restroom? Okay. Hi, nice to meet you. Hi, hi, you're, you're the organizer, I guess. Hi, nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Jeanne.
Hi, nice to meet you.
So when we start, we'll be sitting here.
Okay. Do I wait for the seat?
We just finished up.
Just taking a minute break.
Quite a marathon going on.
Hi, Jessica Pauls, nice to meet you, and nice to meet you.
Seriously, I think I got bitten by a bug during that last hour. I know, but I didn't see a bug.
That's because the lights are on.
I know, and it's warm, I think.
All of a sudden.
Yeah.
First time.
Mosquitoes are not my friend anymore.
They're hungry.
Yeah. Home school?
Yeah, and then you went to a friend. Sure. Have you heard anything from somebody?
Yeah. One time, Cherry Carlson said to me, "I don't want to be a snitch," but I saw Travis riding his bike without a helmet. I go, "Oh, well, we're going to have to know."
And at the same time, I wish I didn't. What's it going to do? How old was he?
He was like in middle school. I'm glad she told me.
All right, do you guys want to get started?
Yes. Yes, join us.
Thank you.
It's nice to meet all of you.
Nice to meet you too. Did everyone had a chance to meet? All right.
Yeah, so thank you. With the pollen coming out, I have a little bit of allergies, so I have a little sucker in case I need it. Just so you know. Yeah, and take one. I might, thank you.
So, thanks, thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me, yes.
Since we all introduced ourselves to you, maybe you just want to take a moment to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about you, and then after that, we'll jump into questions. Is that, is that what we've done?
And we'll also just let you know, we have about 10 questions, just set to prepare you.
Okay, no, that's great. And then, and I looked this morning, I was like, whoa, they have like all these people they're interviewing. So that's grueling in itself to just, you know, try to focus on each of us. So I'll try to make it easy. Anyway, my name is Bella Wong. I'm finishing my 10th year at Lincoln-Sabre, and I was intending to retire from LS. And then, but I am interested very much in what's happening here. And interested in being able to work with you and all the families and students to just maybe, whatever time that you would find helpful in the coming year or months. Previously, and actually, I taught at LS in the 90s, so I'm actually finishing my 17th year. So seven years teaching in the 90s, science and department coordinator. And then I went to Wellesley, and 11 out of 14 years. And so I took a break when I had twins. And after, actually, that was a really hard decision to step out, but it can be done. And, but it was uncertain at the time. But anyway, 11 over 14 years, and I've lived in Weston since 1995. And I drive by here every day on the way to work. When I first became superintendent, 2007, in Wellesley, Gary Burton was the superintendent. And he was a wonderful mentor and welcomed me to colleagues of superintendents. And after Gary, it was Paul Stein. And then after Paul Stein, I believe it was Arthur. And then I was just getting to know Omar Eze. And so in many ways, this community is familiar to me. And I've worked with people who have gone to work in Wayland Public Schools, and I've worked with people who have come from Wayland Public Schools. And I feel I've always had a lot of respect for the community and what it represents. And I am interested at this time to work with you, if that became an opportunity. And restoring balance, and I have always enjoyed everyone affiliated with Wayland. I think the well runs deep. And I would love to be able to come work with you to just affirm that with everyone, that I believe the well runs deep. And that there's a lot of good things in Wayland. And if you think of where you were and where you want to be, then it's all possible.
That's great. I'll start out with the first question then.
Sure.
Would you explain, in your own words, explain the role of the superintendent? What do you see as the most important priorities? And do you see Wayland as having differing priorities than other districts?
So that I feel as superintendent that it's my role to do what I intend to make sure that the most important thing happening in the district is going well. And that's what's happening in the classroom. So it's about supporting good instruction, supporting leaders to be able to ensure that that's happening, making sure that there are resources for everyone to be able to use. So I see the superintendent role as making sure that everyone has what they need to assure. Again, the most important thing happening in the district is in the classroom. And then we must endeavor to forget that, the interaction between instructor and student. And that's everything, you know, it's everything about operations, student services, transportation, food service, could be labor law, it could be everything in doing that. And so the partnership with school community is really important, supporting the superintendent in that endeavor. How do I see it different in Wayland versus other districts? Every, I think the district has to be responsive to its community. And honestly, Wayland Public Schools is a high-performing school district. So I think that Wayland Public Schools probably focuses making sure that needs of all students are being met, but also probably a strong emphasis on improvement. And so you're, what you're offering students and families is probably excellent. But it's also making sure that everyone's having access to that. So I think it's really probably a focus on equity and preparing students for the future and make sure that all happens all together. My sense of Wayland Public Schools is that you have been going through transitions in leadership, so it's really about mentoring and supervising and making sure that everyone is still working together toward a common goal strategically and intentionally. I also think it's really important for the superintendent to be accessible, that anyone with any kind of point of view should be able to feel like they can access the superintendent and feel they can express their thoughts. So I think, I think that's really, really important in however, whatever forums that might be in place to ensure that that happens. But it should be a place where anyone feels like they can call, set up a time, or email.
Great, that's wonderful, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Great, next question. Our staff and families have been poor a lot in the past few years. How do you envision working with the administrators, staff, and families to improve morale and trust? Please give specific examples, including effective communication with stakeholders, and how would you work and communicate with school committees?
So, thank you for that. I really think when coming into a new, to a new district, that it's important to do entry interviews. So when I started in Wellesley and when I returned to Lincoln-Sabre as a superintendent and principal, there are some obvious people that you want to interview. And it would be members of the school committee, would be union leadership, would be the principals. There's that. And then often, I might ask any one of you or anyone that I'm interviewing if they think there's someone else I should speak with. And I really keep the questions simple. The first is generally, what do you think is important for me to know? And then the second question is, what do you think I should know that should be addressed more immediately? And then the third question is, things that should be dealt with, maybe would take more time, but eventually. And so I feel people are really honest in those entry interviews because they know that you really want to know, if they don't tell you, it's not going to be addressed. And I think that the information from those interviews help form a plan about what makes more sense for the community at that time. So I wouldn't presume to guess what the community needs at this time. And so I would depend on those interviews. Interestingly, when I went to Lincoln-Sabre, I actually started as an interim first and then converted to permanent. So I thought when I went there, I'll just do 35. You know, I don't want to over-interview people. But I ended up doing 80 entry interviews. What came to the forefront was there was a murder at LS in 2007. Every single interview mentioned it to the question of what they thought was important for me to know. And it gave me insight that even though something had happened in 2007 and I was asking questions in 2013, that there was unresolved trauma around that. And it was, it was actually a really amazing learning process for me. How in districts, sometimes we deal with trauma in a district, could be a number of things. And I learned that in the first year or the most immediate circumstance, more people need the same thing right after. And then as the years play out, second year, third year, fourth year, people need different things. Some people are, don't want to talk about it anymore. And some people still feel like they want to, they still need that or to acknowledge that the trauma happened. And so that was a tremendous learning experience. And it was very poignant for me because I had started my teaching career there to come back. And it seemed like a long time after that had happened and to hear that that was something that people still needed to voice and resolve. And so one can't underestimate the variability. People respond to the same event. And so I think whoever takes this position should be sensitive to that, that not everyone needs the same thing, and to listen as much as possible so that people get what they need. And so I guess that's the other thing I see as the role of the superintendent, the leader of the district, is to determine as best as possible through input what is needed. And again, it's so that people can have the best capacity to do what they need to do to be able to be present for students in the classroom. School committee is an important partnership with the superintendent. Typically, I, as a superintendent, I would meet regularly with the chair, and sometimes the vice chair as well. So it depends with the comfortability of the committee and what they want to do, and also if people have available time. Sometimes it's just the chair that has time, and sometimes there is a vice chair that is able to do that. But I think it's good as part of transition, like sometimes, because often the vice chair becomes the chair. But it's, it's just really good to have that, those, just to have a couple people to be able to reflect on something that you might be tackling. I really operate on open communication, particularly with the chair and vice chair. It's not possible to do that with the entire committee because of open meeting laws. But to have open communication with the chair and the vice chair so they can determine, or help determine what needs to go to the whole committee. But also with the school committee is just to make sure that we're aligned in the goals for the district, for the superintendent, for the goals that you might set out for yourselves, and that we're all working together toward that. And sometimes it's just making sure each understands their role. Obviously, for the superintendents, the implementation of the policy, the goals, providing the budget. But it's operations, management. And for Wayland Public Schools, it's a large system, high school, middle school, the elementary schools, and all the aspects that come with it. So for a school committee, I think I operate on no surprises. But it's the school committee members, you represent the community. And so I feel you get a lot of input from the community, so it's important for that to be conveyed, to inform the superintendent administration how things are being perceived. So I'm really open to, and I've worked with my teams about being open to feedback. All feedback is important. And it's not necessarily about whether they're wrong or I disagree. It's more, ah, they think that. And so what did we do to have them think that? Or maybe it's just a different point of view. But it's, you know, perception is, perception is perception. That's what people perceive, that's the reality for them. And so to not be defensive about that. But school committee, I feel, is a really important vehicle for receiving input from the community.
So can you please describe your experience with special education services and the balance between providing what the students need and managing the cost of those services to the town?
So I, I have a deep interest in all aspects of operations and programming, and so I have a really deep interest in student services. I feel that as I leave Lincoln-Sabre, that I was able to work with the teams to make sure the last in-district program was put in place. So the last one we put in place was, is for students with autism that otherwise would be out of district in a day program. And we did it in partnership with NAC. But prior to that, I supported the entry of a transition program for students who've been out, who have missed school. Sometimes it's through hospitalization, sometimes for other reasons, and they need extra support to transition back in. That's the Beacon Program. I also worked with our teams to create a program called LS Academy, which is for students that typically would have gone out to day programs with social emotional disabilities. And so it's actually two miles from the school, but it is part of LS. And it, students that would have gone to Calabasas or other day programs are now with us at LS. So we also did that. We organized some of our programs so that it was more distinctly students on the autistic spectrum, more with Asperger's, and then students with non-language verbal disabilities, so dyslexia. Reinforced that. And then we also reorganized our behavioral programs. So now I feel pretty good that we have all the programs possible at LS that would hold students in district. And at the same time, sometimes students really do need that out-of-district placement. But by building the in-district programs, it has helped, it has helped contain our costs. But I also think it's better for students and families in the long run. I'll just name it because it's a fact. I think for some of us, with students that experience anxiety or depression and suicidality, radiation, when we send them to programs out of district and they graduate, they often don't have those ties to the community that sustain them after. And so they struggle even more when they go to college. And so this was part of the motivation of building programs in district for students that otherwise would have gone out. So even though their programming is still substantially separate for social and emotional or emotional disabilities, they still have these ties to, they still identify as being part of LS. And I think that helps sustain them when they graduate, that they have these connections to the school. And I find when students go out of district, it doesn't feel the same for them. So I have, I also feel that everyone in the district needs to own all the kids. And that we're all always working toward getting students to be less restrictive environment if possible, like we're always working toward that. And it's, that every educator is part of that process. And so we've done a lot of training about writing IEPs that are helpful for general ed teachers. And just a lot of training offered to teachers in terms of supporting their differentiation so they have a broader repertoire. So I really feel it's all in, and that everyone should understand all the programs and the profile of all the students in all the programs, and has a sense of that. And so I think it promotes a sense of belonging and inclusion for all students, whether they're getting supports or not. Thank you, Sharon.
So why are you interested in pursuing the acting superintendent position in Wayland in July of 2023 specifically? And what do you believe you can contribute to the Wayland Public Schools, our students, staff, and families, and the Wayland community in that position if you are hired? And how would you prepare for starting in Wayland?
Yeah, so I did start off in saying that I was, I was actually one- Yeah, so I did start off in saying that I was, I was actually winding down at LS and I was thinking, okay, I'm gonna retire. And I actually have been accepted to do coaching for next year. The NSAP program, which is a collaboration between DESI and MASSS. And so I have, I'll be a new coach next year for new superintendents. And so as a first-year coach, I'll be assigned two new superintendents. And it's a very prescriptive plan about what it is that we're supposed to do and how many hours of coaching we're supposed to give each new superintendent. But it's, it's, I drive by here every day. And so I, again, I don't presume to understand everything that's going on in district. But I, I would love the opportunity to work with the district and all of you to support it through this time. I think I'm unusual in that I really like budget. I really am drawn to student services. I think the buses have to run on time and food has to be presentable and ready. So I, I really find all parts of the operational part like enjoyable and find it interesting and essential to making sure that everyone's having a good experience as much as possible in school. I have, I like long commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion of long-term schools. And it's clear when you go to the Wayland Public School website that you have lost key members or are losing key members of your cabinet that are just naturally transitioning out. And so you're looking at interim positions and, and maybe new principals and all of that. And I, I feel very comfortable in terms of mentoring pretty much student services and budget and all of that. Like I feel, I feel in facilities as well. Part of my job in Wellesley West facility, so part of building the high school, the renovation of the middle school, building a new elementary school, boilers, everything, all of that. So in some ways, I feel maybe I'm uniquely, I have, that my attitudes about those different things might be a good fit while you're going through transition in various areas. So while I was at Lincoln Sebrye, it was primarily high school. But at Wellesley, it was preschool, elementary, middle and high school. And honestly, I really miss the, the opportunity to be in elementary and middle schools and preschool. So it'd be, it'd be, it'd be very enjoyable to be able to come back and do that and have that experience and be with all the different grade levels.
Okay. Wayland families are looking for a superintendent who will listen and put student needs first. Wayland teachers are accustomed to autonomy. How can you balance relationships with both families and our educators so that our students get what they need for success? Please provide examples from your experience.
So it's, it's honestly really important to hear from all stakeholders. So our students, our families, our teachers, administration, and of course, the school committee, but also community members. I, I never, I, we're funded by the community, so I just never forget that. And so we owe a sense of transparency to the community that they feel that whatever they're investing in the schools is, is, is being done well and, and for a good purpose. So I mean, we can't ever forget, we are, we're a public entity and we're funded by that. And it's important for those of us in school, all of us around the table and all of us in school is to make it clear why the things we are doing and asking funding for are important. And it is, so whatever ways that work for this community in terms of getting that input, sometimes it's forums, sometimes it's just emails. I do communicate out regularly to the community through the newsletters just to let people know what's going on. Sometimes it can be insight on what's happening in the world and people often write back to reflect on what, what I've written. I really enjoy when people feel like they can engage in a two-way communication. That's always welcome. And that challenge is really trying to create a forum or that, that people will do that, take advantage of that. Teachers, I think teachers do better when they feel like they have autonomy. So it's, it's important to recognize that, that if teachers feel like they have agency to, and respect to do what they think is best, that we respect their talent, their experience, their skill. And so we, it's important for teachers to feel like that, that that's happening. And if, and so I feel maybe it's a balance. I don't, I think it's important that people don't feel that things are all top-down. That if there's something strategic and intentional that we wanna do, that we have check-in points along the way and we have buy-in. I really aspire to a leadership style that engenders loyalty. People look to their leaders to make decisions. So loyalty, our trust come from a decision you make, actually every decision you make time after time, like trust comes over time. And so in decision-making, I think it's really important to be clear about how the decision is being made. Sometimes it's consensus, sometimes it's gonna be a vote, sometimes a faculty are gonna vote, sometimes a superintendent's gonna make a decision. But just to be clear, like how, how that's gonna be done. But you shouldn't make any decision that, that impacts people without input. And, and hopefully, decisions are, are part of what, what is a shared, shared plan for outcomes, things like that. But I, I think, but yeah, teachers should feel like they are being respected for the agency they have in their classroom. And sometimes the bridge is just communication. And then sometimes decisions are made and there will be a difference in opinion, but it's best just to name it for what, what it might be.
All right, I'll, I'll take the next question.
Okay, I was thinking that wasn't ten.
The committee takes its anti-racism resolution seriously. We have families of color who live in our town and who live in Boston. Please describe specific ways in which you've provided advancement for students of color and other marginalized student populations in your previous districts and share what actionable steps you have taken to improve communication, acceptance and ensure all families, and specifically families of color and other marginalized groups feel welcome in our schools.
Thank you. I, I did see that you had the anti-racist resolution on your website. And so LS School Committee has done that as well. And I think a lot of area school committees have done that. So I think looking at your core value statement is consistent with the core values of the districts I've worked with. I think we're all seeking to ensure equitable access to excellence and opportunities for all our students. And the fact is, though, when we look at the data, the representation will show that there are gaps. There are academic gaps and there are opportunity gaps. And when I say opportunity gaps, it will be the representation on activities or co-curricular, maybe in placement of classes. And so the, so all of us are working toward that end. And at Lincoln Sebrye, so that is where I've been the last ten years, we developed a strategic plan, 2020 to 25, so we're in the middle of it. So when, so bridging, bridging gaps really has to be intentional and it has to be a commitment over time. And it, so it has to be planful. I'm a big fan of Darnisa and at Jackson. And she talks about building blocks, diversity, belonging, inclusion and equity. And so that, her, her frame really resonates with me in that you have to build the, the community culture over time. And so diversity is recognizing what's in the room. Belonging is making sure people are invited to have a place at the table. And then inclusion might be that you're all together, sort of planning together. And equity would be, you're actually running, you're, you're, you're running the agenda. And so to get to equity takes time. And so she says, you could be working on diversity, inclusion and belonging, aspects of that on your way to get to equity. But you really have to get everyone all on diversity and then belonging, inclusion, sort of build that capacity and understanding. And she will say it takes a good eight, ten years, eight to ten years to get there. And the other person I really, his work resonates with me is Ron Ferguson. So it has to be multifaceted. Ron Ferguson would say you need to engage your families, so family engagement. You need to be culturally responsive, so youth culture. You need to know who's in your, who, who your students are, where they come from, their culture, their history, what they represent, their perspectives. You also need to focus on instructional practice, the third strand. So making sure you have culturally responsive classrooms and people are supported to be able to do that. But that is the heart of everything in the classroom. You have to build a culture. So the fourth one of looking at your data and figuring out what data you're gonna look at and have that inform your practice 'cause you can't really know if something's working unless you're sort of collecting some sort of baseline and then measuring yourself against that. And then the fifth one is just leadership. So I kinda talked about how the leadership I try to, the type of leadership I aspire to, but actually the best model is recognizing the importance of distributive leadership, like being able to build leadership capacity in all your schools at multi-levels. But leadership can be not someone with positional authority, can be someone just has a vision and just wants to do things. Like a lot of times, students have ideas for things and that's leadership and letting them and supporting that. So it's just recognizing that there are many strands that you have to tap into in your strategic plan about being able to address gaps. And so we're in the third year of our strategic plan at LS. And we are, we've been focusing on belonging, inclusion elements. And so next year, we are launching an advisory. So that's a big initiative. All students will be assigned to groups 10 to 12 by grade level in the next year. And we've been building the curricular activities for that advisory. It's gonna meet once a week for thirty minutes. It's three years in the planning, three years in the planning. And part of that was to get buy-in from everyone to do it. But that will be what we found from our survey data, and that's the other thing, is the annual survey data, the equity surveys. What we found is our students said, yes, they had a trusted adult. Eighty percent of them say they have a trusted adult. But they don't feel as comfortable peer-to-peer. White male students are the most comfortable, white female students less. And then if they're coming from Lincoln Sebrye or Boston, if they identify as Asian or Hispanic, it'll be different. And so advisory is a way to reinforce mixing up peer-to-peer groupings and being able to establish just more opportunities for that kind of community, peer-to-peer relationships. So we're really excited about that for advisory next year. So that's a big initiative. The other thing, this year we were looking as we decided, let's pick some metrics to look at, let's try them out. So one metric we looked at was participation in co-curricular and activities. And we are just looking at that data. Interestingly, athletics, more participation in slightly on males, activities slightly higher on females. But then looking at how our students identify, and there's disparities when we look at their participation. So if you think about, and then twenty percent don't participate in anything, they say. And it could be they're doing something outside of district, but twenty percent. And so what does that mean? That we have students that go through four years at LS, not in any club or any athletics. So that's something for the faculty to think about. Is that something that's okay or not? So I'm getting a little ahead of our processing. But it might be something that we would address through advisory groups about healthy risk-taking, trying out new things. But if you think twenty percent aren't in any athletics or activities, what that means to their sense of inclusion and belonging? So this is a way of just looking at, hopefully, data and not feel defensive about it, but just, and be able to start as a baseline and measuring forward. So as I said, it's a commitment over time and it needs to be intentional, it needs to be strategic. And when you develop that plan, you need to, you need to hear the voices of the students, the staff and the, and the community. And so we've been doing our, we've been using our equity surveys a lot from year to year. In, in Wellesley, I'm gonna say, we, we weren't as fully developed in terms of looking at the time when I was there. I think everyone's doing strategic plans now. It's something that we all recognize that we, that the only way we can change is if we're doing it all together. Part of the coaching that I described is to work with new superintendents around strategic planning. So it's recognized across the state, and this is DESI and MASSS working in partnership, that it's, that everyone, we need to be doing it across the state. It can't be isolated in Wayland, can't be isolated in Lincoln Sebrye or Wellesley or Weston. Everyone needs to be doing that all together. So when people go from district to district, you're picking up the work wherever you are. And then all our students, when they're graduating, when they go off into the world, that, that it'll be, they'll find some continuity. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Could you provide a concrete example from your past experience as a superintendent where you were faced with a difficult conflict involving at least two or more parties for a challenging time for the district? Describe the nature of the conflict or challenge, how you approached it and what was the result of your intervention? And if you had to do it all over again, would you, what would you have done differently?
So it, it happens a lot. And some things are more private. Excuse me. I'll talk, I'll talk, here's one that might, might resonate with you. So students put up posters in school and, and their objective was, they were not comfortable with who used the N-word. And they felt that it was okay for some to use the N-word, not others. And so the poster, the intention of the poster was to indicate who could use the N-word and who couldn't. It went up in school and the administrators in the building weren't sure if it was, if it was a joke. They weren't really sure who put up the posters. So they went through the school and decided to take the posters down. At which point the students identified, no, we put the posters up and this is what we wanted to communicate. And so an administrator met with them to talk about the poster. And there was also some cultural misappropriation embedded in the posters. So decided to, to meet with the students and talk, talk about this. meet with the students and talk, talk about this. And um, in the process expressed the word fully. And um, the students that, that um, the administrator met with were um, all students of color. And um, and so it, it escalated. So that escalated in our, in our, among our Boston community and among students in the building. And so our response was to meet with the students and offer counseling. I went to Boston to meet with families and started a process that actually continued to this day. Um, the things that we put in place, this happened in 2018. Yeah. So um, after this, we thought about our policy around the use of the N-word. We didn't have a policy around that word. Um, it took a while to process with the students and with the families. There was a lot of anger um, toward the administrator. And so navigating that as well, it caused us to create a racial climate task force. And which was a representative group and then a charter for that. But around the, the use of the N-word, um, I met with students, I met with families in Boston, and families in Boston pretty much were like, they shouldn't be using that word in school. Um, but students in, in school, some felt, no, that's our word. We can use that word. And um, so it, it took several meetings with the kids and um, and finally we got to a guidance, but also my being able to say to students at one, at some point, not right away, was that I understand the word can be used in a context among friends. And it may have a different meaning. Um, but once that word leaves that, that cocoon and you're in school, um, no one owns the word. And so whatever it was expressed in that context, um, once it's, once it's out in the, in the school environment, it carries all the ugliness of its, its history and connotations. Um, it took a while to be able to say that. With the, with the students and have them at least feel that I heard what they said, they might have still disagreed. So our N-word guidance is you are not to express the word in the school environment um, in this, and that includes the campus and school activities. Consequences will take into consideration who said it, to whom, and what was the context. So it sounds convoluted, but actually it made sense for us and, and still makes sense for us. We're, we're still working on it though.
Great. You said you liked budgets, now here's a budget question. Wayland's facing a very tight FY24 school budget as $1.2 million was cut from the original recommended budget for FY24. A large part of our budget increase next year includes a 48% increase in special ed expenses. What's your experience working with an extremely tight budget? Creative solutions to working within the budget to provide the necessary services for all our students and budgeting for future years? And I think you already touched on this, do you have any experience with MSBA building projects?
Sorry?
No, that's okay. Um, do you have any experience with MSBA building projects? Have we, we've submitted a statement of interest for an elementary building project?
Are you looking to renovate or build or? For the elementary?
Either.
Either? It is hard to address um, flexibility on a budget just in a given year. So, so I kind of look at it long-range. For instance, um, Lincoln, Sebry, the enrollment is, is decreasing and it will decrease over time. And so with faculty, I said that when people retired or otherwise left district, I was gonna take advantage of natural attrition. So we've been doing that for um, the last few years. So we've been reducing our FTE, but I really only had to let go maybe a point five position due to budget reductions. The rest of it has been through natural attrition. So some part of it is just looking forward the best you can. And as I said, building in, in district programs. So that takes planning and looking out over time. Typically, if you have a lot of students that are going out and they, and they seem to be, represent a, um, a common profile, that is a reason for maybe trying to build in district program. I'm thinking that Wayland probably has done a lot of that examination over time. It is, sometimes it's helpful to have outside parties come and try to help you look, you know, audit and see if there are efficiencies that you can find. And um, you really try to save as much as possible. Um, what you're trying to protect is what's happening in the classroom. So the efficiencies, hopefully you can just try to do your best to find them in operations, whether it's through um, energy savings, strategies, things like that. And uh, sometimes it means bidding out an insurance product. LS, we used to offer three different healthcare providers. And working with the teachers, we agreed to go to a single provider. So that, that failed on the first attempt, but it succeeded on the next. So things like that to, to work on where you can find efficiencies that won't affect the classroom. But if it gets to the classroom, then advocating to the community and hopefully getting more support. Uh, but you do your best with the operations as much as possible. With MSBA, I, I, I've been at LS 10 years, but while I was at Wellesley, pretty much every year there was something. So I have um, worked to build a new high school, Wellesley High School. Wellesley Middle School with 1,100 students was renovated occupied. And I don't recommend it, but we did it. You know, they would fix one wing and then um, six months we would move. So part of the building had to move. And um, so some, some of the shifts were three months and so we were constantly moving. Um, so that, so that um, one of the elementary schools was, was a closed building, had been an elementary school and we, it, it was completely gutted and built. So that's a Sprague Elementary School. Two elementary schools were fundamentally renovated as well, Hardy and Bates. We built a preschool through permanent modular construction. Um, so it ended up dealt with temporary modulators, all of that. It's important that if you, is this the first time you've submitted the statement of interest to MSB, your first attempt?
Yeah, we're just, our second attempt is going in on Monday, I think.
All right. Really important, um, when you go to that step, that you have community support. Because if you, if you do um, get approved, you need to go quickly and, and get that approval. So it's important to, as many times as you're applying, to make sure you have community support for that. You really pretty much have to dot your i's and cross your t's. There are so many applications that if you get an opportunity to be the next on the agenda, you just want to be really ready. Um, the MSBA offers a lot of informational sessions, which I'm sure your staff have been participating in. Um, they're pretty prescriptive about what it is that they want you to be able to prove and do. A lot of it is on your enrollment, your student needs, that they're gonna look for justification. And they are, unfortunately, there, there might be other communities that are more dire and so they will be prioritizing. So you just have to be really clear about, you just have to be really ready when you put that application in. Yeah.
Great.
Sure.
So you kind of, you talked a lot about safety at the beginning. What are your thoughts on planning for school safety? And what is your position on police involvement in schools? And please give examples from three of those districts.
Um, school safety is imperative, but you also don't want students to feel like they're, they're under guard. But you, there, there's just no way around it, you have to do your training. So I assume you're doing your LS training, your tornado training, your fire, everything. I also feel it's important to have um, very collegial supportive relationships with your safety officers, fire and police. I am fully supportive of the memorandum of understanding that you can have with your safety officers, so there's um, open sharing. So um, and it's understood that what you share remains confidential. And um, I have found particularly on LS, um, we have really positive relationships with our police departments in both Lincoln and Sebry. We do have a school resource officer at the high school. Sebry Public Schools and Lincoln Public Schools are separate school districts from us, but they also have school resource officers in their schools. But we have, we have very positive relationships and working relationships with our safety officers. So we appreciate our relationship with our SROs. So I, I don't, I don't know that you can have a positive relationship with your SRO if that other part doesn't exist. So it's, it's really important. And um, if we're in a crisis, I know they will be there and um, and we will feel good about their being there. We do have some security cameras at the high school. They are deliberately placed. They are, um, in my time there, I've increased the number of cameras just to ensure that every way into the building and out of the building has a camera on it. So when I started there, not all entrances were covered. So the focus is on, on, on the, on the ways of getting in the building and out of the building. We're recently asking the town to approve cameras on the common areas. So we have um, three main buildings and sometimes three or four stories. The stairs are in the center, so we're just asking for cameras on the common areas. So if we had an intruder, we might be able to capture them coming in and then maybe some of their progress through the building. We do not have cameras throughout the hallways. Um, we do have cameras in um, high-taft areas, near the musical instruments, near the metal jewelry, the fitness equipment. So every time, everywhere we have them, it's for a protective purpose. We have signage up to just let people know that we have the cameras. They're not monitored, they're just there if something happens and they can be looked at after. They can be flipped to the police, but only on our flip. We have a camera on the outside of the building on the roof that's 360. We, so LS is on 90 acres. Um, and we felt that that was important, that we had a 360 view. Um, the other, my bottle cap, um, the other exterior view in the building is toward the parking lot. So, so again, the, where we have them stationed is deliberate. So not for monitoring, not for surveillance, but to enhance our safety of the building and access. There are other um, safety features that we've added to the building. We are quite diligent about our trainings. I am, yeah. I think it's one of the more I talk. And it only started um, a couple of days ago. So anyway, but we're, we're really diligent about all our trainings um, with our, our nurses and um, staff, restraint training, all of that. But we take school safety really seriously and we try to make it um, not intrusive on our learning environment, but we do our best to make sure staff is trained and ready to go. The police in the summer, they come and they do trainings in the building so that they're familiar with the floor plan. We do not post our floor plan on the website. We do not allow videos of how you go from one place to another in, in the school. Um, our doors are now locked, they weren't locked a few years ago. That is a new thing. So we, all the students have key cards now. We, and so Lincoln, Sebry was built to be fully accessible from all sides, was just how it was built. So that was, that's been a shift for us.
Lastly, is there anything else you would like to tell us about yourself?
Um, I, if, if you wouldn't mind, like what I hope for students. So I really, I really hope that when our students graduate, um, that they understand their place in the world. And um, and they also appreciate their agency to make the world the, the way they want it and not accept it the way it is necessarily. And so that's reflected in our portrait of a graduate. I couldn't find yours. I looked, um, but, so the portrait of graduate is what we want kids to be able to do by the time they graduate. So it is content. I really think kids need to understand history, they need to understand how things work, how to build things, um, and skills. They need to know how to communicate, they need to know how to be persuasive. And they need to have certain habits of mind, be self-aware, be reflective, be critical thinkers, all of that. But I think it's really important for them to feel like they, when they leave, they can change things. And um, and all of it should be premised on a strong foundational set of core values, which I know that you have in your website. And so that when they go out there, that they think they, that they'll be able to take care of themselves no matter where they find themselves. Um, but also that they'll look out for one another and hopefully that they'll find peace. So that is really what I hope we are all aspiring to do with, with the kids when they graduate, that they have the power to change the world, but also they'll do good things with it. Thank you.
Thanks for meeting with us, we really appreciate it very much. Do you have anything you want to ask us?
Um, I'm, I am curious, but I feel like maybe more for like if, if I ended up with the opportunity, like I am so curious about what you've done to sort of hear what people feel like they need at this time. And maybe you did that in, in anticipation of looking for the interim. I, I'm really curious about that. And um, but again, I think it's for the person you, you end up choosing. Um, I, I think the episode of the graffiti must have been traumatic. I wonder how the staff feel, I wonder how the kids feel. And depending on how people identify, how, how that's responded. I will say the last time I was in this building, I was driving on my way to work and I stopped, I had to check on um, Dr. Eazy, to see how he was doing. So um, those are things I really am curious and, and care about. I'm sorry, I'm like, feel like I want to start coughing. Yeah, anyway.
Very good. Well, thank you. Really appreciate it.
We hope you feel better.
I think it's just the talking and allergies, I guess. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much for meeting with us.
I think probably you don't want to shake my hand though. Yeah. And so will we. And I've been testing every day, so I just, yeah, so anyway. All right.
Thank you so much.
Take care, Bella. Take care, Wayland. Thank you. Shut down?
Yes, but all I was going to say is I'm going to post tomorrow for Friday. You want me, I wasn't trying to post tomorrow. I just haven't posted Friday. So I'm just confirming, 2:30 Friday on Zoom.
Does that still work for everybody? Because I have like something opened up so I could do earlier, like morning.
Someone couldn't do till after 1:00.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I felt like I was holding everyone up. But I didn't want to do that.
No, no, that's fine. I think 2:30 is fine. Yeah. I think we should post and, yeah.
Okay. Great. Okay, I will do.
All right. So we, we need, we need a motion of adjournment, right?
Yes.
We'll move to adjourn. Just a second.
All those in favor?